Stuff that came down that.
Lots of stuff been sitting up there for a long time.
Right, that the the dam broke at the top. I don't know if you're aware of that. There's a it's kind of a cement barrier that's got these tall pieces of wood or metal sticking out of the top. It kind of looks like a filter that I think is meant to keep the big stuff from coming down, but it all got undermined and kind of split in half. So I think, yeah, it's something to see if you have a extra minute to go down.
Go back there. I should actually just walk back there on that trail.
You might be able to look down on it from where you are. Can you look over the edge and see it from?
Guys, I think we have everybody. Yeah.
Yeah, I've got a pretty good view from there.
Yeah, you might be able to see it.
Yeah, hi, guys. Good evening, gentlemen and guests here. Before we formally get started, I just wanted to mention that at I think it was the last meeting I made some wisecrack about not having a gavel. And Hoshi overheard me. And so for Christmas, I ended up getting this nice handmade, handcrafted gavel. So I have a career as an itinerant judge. Have gavel will travel. So with that, I would like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting or special meeting of January 11. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate the Zoom meeting process. Commissioners and city staff are participating from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting, all one word. Members of the public wishing to speak or defer time to another speaker during the meeting must participate through the Zoom application and must be present in the Zoom conference to be recognized. The city requests that you sign up to speak before the item you would like to speak on has been called by the chair. For those wishing to defer time, you are not required to sign up to speak. Alex, do you have a slide to show there, please? Now we're popping you on this at the last moment. You should have a slide there somewhere. The text, the accompanying text of which reads at the start of public comment for the item, the chair shall ask members of the public wishing to defer time to raise their hands in the Zoom meeting using the reactions button. Each person will be called to verify their presence in the Zoom meeting and their intent to donate time. Once called upon, please lower your hand in the Zoom meeting. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand and I'll call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record in the public. Do we have an approval of the agenda? Yeah, yes.
Can I just add one thing? I'm, you know, all of us have dealt with this for a long time. And so we're all used to the idea that if you want to donate time, you can donate one minute. But then that means that you lose your right to speak. And just to make that clear to the people, I think you might add that to the little script that goes on because there's still, you know, for people who don't weren't planning commission junkies, they might not understand what the rules are.
That's a good point. I will. This is pretty much just what I was given. I'll take a quick proofread on it and see if I can make it clear.
I move to approve the agenda in reverse order with one B before one A.
Oh, second.
Second.
Yeah, I'll second, third and fourth that. Do we?
Should only be heard being presented simultaneously.
Well, I think we need to talk about the the project itself first and get through that. And then that will determine how to handle the Jupa, I think.
Well, the Jupas unnecessary if the if the.
Well, yeah, exactly. So the point being we don't we don't know how.
The Jupa is in one B. That's what you said to hear first.
I have another hearing to reverse the Jupa.
Whatever the lettering, I think we want to put the Jupa after the main structure, main project, right? Do we need to vote on that? Or is that we have a voice consensus? Is that sufficient?
I just want to, we do need to, if we're reordering, we need to get a vote. But I want to, I want to hear from Richard and Adrian about how they were planning to present it. So that it does match what how we're actually calling it in the in the meeting.
I think it's it's fine, Trevor. We can present it any in any order that the commission would like us to.
So you have two separate presentations, one for one B and one A.
That's correct.
And you want to do them separate, not together? Okay.
That makes sense.
Okay, then the motion is to to approve the agenda, but move item one B before item one A. Is that correct?
That sounds correct, yes.
Okay.
Did I get a second?
You're doing several of them.
Yes, okay. I.
We call the, can we call the roll Rebecca?
Yes, as a point of clarification, which of you feel like you made the first second? Because I heard a lot of you second that.
Just pick somebody who doesn't matter. I think you have to.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jennings.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Chair Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we're on to item, I guess, one B. For some reason, I my cover sheet is in the other room.
I'm wondering if we could take a roll call. I know you're all here, but just for the record.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings. Commissioner Maza. Vice Chair Smith. Commissioner Button.
Here.
Chair Hill.
Here mostly.
You have a quorum.
Okay, Trevor, you had a comment there.
Sure, I was gonna ask if you could get if you could ask for a report on the posting of the agenda.
Ah, okay, report on the posting of the agenda, please.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on December 27, 2021.
Okay, thank you. Now, normally we would go on to public comment at this point, I believe. Do we have any public wanting to comment?
There is no public comment on a special meeting. It's only for the agenda items. It's for our regular meetings when there is a public comment for items not on the agenda.
Right, and I understand that. Okay, so in that regard, we would not have general public comment. We go straight to the item, but we may, there may be public comment that we need to allow at this point on the item.
After you call the item, then then it'll just proceed for regular comments on the hearing.
Right, 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 right. Okay, so.
No comments from us. We just go right into the meeting?
I I would be happy to. If you have comments you'd like to make, I'd be happy to squeeze them in here right now.
Dennis, I think the confusion is you have general comments on items that aren't on the agenda. We're not going to do that. We're gonna have comments on the item on the are on the agenda. And then the commissioners comment on those, right?
That's the agenda item. I guess I think Dennis is saying you have something not on the agenda that you'd like to comment on.
Yeah.
And I would say if that's quick, let's unless there's some legal technicality, why not hear it now?
Okay. My feeling at this point right now on this commission is I feel that Commissioner John Maza should resign his post at this position. There's no reason in the world that he should stay on the commission after insulting staff the way he did in the Jefferson Wagner affidavit. There's no reason for him to continue to be on the commission if he's harboring those kind of feelings about staff that he feels it's okay to insult them like that. There is no way that hang on, this is my turn. So there's no way I feel that you should ever be on this commission or another one going down the road. These people you have rattled and up.
Dennis, you're breaking up. We're we're.
Frozen.
You're frozen. Dennis is frozen. Let's give him a second to if he recovers in a second grade if not.
That's a weird one. We haven't seen that one before.
Yeah.
Well, you sign off and sign back on.
Yeah, Dennis, I don't know. Maybe you can't hear us, but.
I probably can't hear us.
Yeah. Well, I'm disinclined to hear any rebuttals till he finishes his comment.
There you go.
There we go. And so the point being is it's this isn't going to work. It you need to, you need to go, you need to go, dude, because not only did you insult staff, but you insult our consultants on that work for our city. Birdview was the last great one that you did. You insulted Fitz. You insulted Lauren. I it's enough, enough. No more. You don't deserve to be on this commission at all. So I hope I hope there's tools in place. And if the department heads want to make this charge to have you removed, they should. Thank you.
Okay. I am not going to resign. Nor did I even come close what the city council did to Jefferson or to Bruce Silverstein, not even close. And they aren't resigning. The second point is there's other people who have conflicts of interest on this commission that should resign and aren't resigning. You included. And I have been on this commission for 12 years. And I know how to do it. You've been on it for one year. Maybe you do, maybe you don't. If somebody lies to me or gives a bad answer, I am gonna call them on it every single time.
But you insulted staff, John. That's the bad part. You insulted staff, never thinking that anybody was gonna hear that or read it. That's the bad part. You've got people on this screen that are looking to you now, and they're not looking at you the same as they did two months ago. Trust me.
Well, I don't trust you, so doesn't matter. I'm not resigning.
Okay, okay, gentlemen, gentlemen, we're all big boys here. I think that. Okay, okay, gentlemen, gentlemen, we're, we're all big boys here. I think that, um. I think it's within our right and our purview to have strong comments about others. Of course, it'd be great if we could keep things polite, but, um. You know, at the same time, I don't think we should be having to pull our punches just to, you know, coddle anybody or anything. I think. The, the truth will out. So let's just, let's try to be good to each other and, and move forward. Okay, so. Does anybody have any other comments before we really get going here?
Well, we're gonna hear from the public, correct?
Yes.
When we call the item, yes.
Yes. Okay.
We got, we got a staff report first, right?
Yep.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's open the item. Um, for some reason, I'm only seeing. The, the one A Jupa. I'm not finding the right pa- oh, here we go. Here we go. Um, so we're on to item one B. The Malibu Inn Motel Costa Development Permit number zero nine dash zero six seven. Mitigated Negative Declaration Number twenty dash zero zero three and Initial Study Number twenty dash zero zero three. Conditional Use Permit Number eighteen dash zero zero two. Variance numbers eighteen dash zero, zero two nine, eighteen dash zero three zero, eighteen dash zero three one. And twenty dash zero three five. Site Plan Review Number eighteen dash zero two five and Joint Use Parking Agreement Number eighteen dash zero zero one. An application for development of a motel project continued from December sixth, two thousand twenty one. Let's hear the latest staff report on this, if we will, please.
Can I ask a question?
Quick one.
Yes, we got a document. Says it was received today, but it was sent. On January fourth from Stephen Hakim that. Had. Quite a few pages, uh, four pages of requested changes. Uh, was, was this ever distributed to the public? Because it appears to have happened after the staff report.
That's a good question. I think that's a question for staff.
Yep.
Um, I, I apologize. Can, can you, uh, make that statement one more time, John?
Well, I got a document dated from. Was sent to us from the city staff. Uh, stamped received today, but I got it a couple of days ago, um. From Stephen Hakim dated January fourth. Uh, and then the report is August twenty sixth, twenty twenty one on revisions of conditions requested. Uh, is this something that the public should? Well, I guess it's also a question for Trevor. Is this something the public should know? I, I assume it was never distributed to the public.
Richard, was this made available to the public?
That's what I'm looking through, Rebecca. Perhaps you can help me. I'm looking through, uh, all the correspondence that you've published lately. And I wanted to make sure I didn't miss this one. I believe that I saw this one go out to the group. Is that correct, Rebecca?
It went to the commissioners on this go round. Um, but I believe it was initially prepared by the Hakims for the last planning commission meeting. So I'm going to check through the report. To see if it's part of the recall, record there.
My understanding is that there is more since the last report because we've made several comments in the last meeting. Which this latest letter has replied to. So it can't have been prepared in advance of the prior meeting.
So, uh, let me, let me just clarify that the last, I apologize, Commissioner Jennings, uh, for, for stepping in here. So, um. There were documents that they attached that were available, uh, prior to, uh, tonight's meeting. And then there was, uh, a response to public comments and comments received from a couple of the commissioners. Um, and they prepared that, uh, for tonight's meeting. That, um, that reply or that, uh, response. Was an attachment to the staff report, um, that is before you today. So all that information was made available. In addition, um, to it being attached to the staff report, um. Rebecca, uh, forward the information to all interested parties and the commissioners ahead of this meeting, uh, as soon as that information was made available to us.
So this is the, uh, Malibu Inn revisions and conditions of approval requested?
That was, that part was provided to us, uh, months ago, and it was an attachment to a former. Uh, planning, uh, you know, commission staff report.
Okay, thank you. That answers it. I just want to make sure the public could comment on it if they didn't know about it.
Yeah, and they did. Uh, we did receive comments on that months ago, uh, from the public. Um, and also, uh, you receive staff, uh, comments on some of the things that were requesting, um, at the last, uh, uh, you know, public hearing we had on this item.
Okay, I'm good.
Should we start now? All right. Uh, good evening, uh, Chair Hill and members of the Planning Commission. Uh, this item is for the construction of a seven thousand. Uh, six hundred ninety-three square foot, two, uh, twenty, uh, room motel. With a sub training garage, uh, surface parking lot. Uh, rooftop deck, swimming pool, uh, retaining walls and septic system. At the November first meeting, the planning commission asked for an explanation regarding lot area and floor area ratio. Uh, in summary, uh. Uh, it was, um, evident that the tax assessor. Um, did not accurately, uh, state the lot area in the tax assessor map. Um, however, staff relies on the survey for lot area information and all calculations in the staff report. And plans were based on the survey lot area. Uh, the building floor area was also calculated. Uh, accurately, uh, floor area ratio does not exclude one-to-one slopes. Steeper, uh, which is different from the total developments for footage. calculation, um, uh, for residential development. Uh, which in the code explicitly states that one-to-one slopes and steeper are removed from that. A lot area, uh, for the total developments for footage calculation. Uh, since the last. Since the last, uh, meeting, uh, the applicant, uh, also agreed to add. Uh, new story poles and managed to, uh, represent the location of the. Uh, tall retaining wall behind the building. Uh, the story poles were once. Uh, uh, again confirmed to accurately represent the location and the height of the proposed, uh, motel building.
I can't.
Staff report also includes a. Uh, response to, uh, questions brought up by, uh, commissioners and the public. Uh, that were provided right before the December sixth, uh, planning commission, uh, hearing. A couple of the commissioners and some of the. Um, members of the public, uh, questioned why staff. Did not, uh, obtain a water quality control board determination on the project. Um, and, uh, whether the project, uh, continues to be exempt, uh, from the civic center's, um, septic, uh, prohibition area. Uh, staff, uh, requested this information from the applicant. But as stated in the staff report, uh, they indicated that the water quality control board would not. Uh, review any projects or provide any feedback until the city makes a decision on the project. Uh, it should also be noted. That the planning commission, uh, majority decided to re, to not require any further information. From the Water Quality Control Board. And, uh, it was made into, uh, the last, uh, uh, public hearing motion. On this item, uh, condition number eighty-eight requires. That the applicant provide a water discharge, discharge requirements permit. Issued by the regional qua- quality control board. Uh, if staff, uh, uh, would like to recommend that the planning commission would accept a change to that condition. That would, um. Uh, modified, uh, so that it. Uh, uh, it requires this permit, uh, to be, uh, submitted to, um, the city prior to the issuance of any city issued. Uh, development permit. Uh, that way we would have the Water Quality Control Board approval. Prior to the issuance of any permits, uh, but it would be subsequent to a planning. Uh, approval if, if one is, uh, granted, uh, by the city. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the subject property is currently a surface parking lot, uh, located immediately east of the Malibu Inn. Uh, the parking lot is. Used to provide the necessary offsite parking spaces for Malibu Inn. As well as it also provides a few sur- uh, surplus parking spaces for public use. Uh, the existing parking lot consists of. Uh, somewhere around thirty-eight of forty parking spaces, uh, thirty-one of which are required for the Malibu Inn. Uh, uh, which means that about seven to nine parking spaces, uh, can be used for public, uh, parking. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the proposed project includes a fire department access, uh, uh, one-way. In and, uh, two right turns out of the, uh, facility staff is also conditioning the project to remove the next. Uh, the next driveway approach to, uh, the west to improve onsite circulation. Uh, safety, um, both access. And parking will continue to be joint with the, uh, adjacent Malibu Inn. Uh, the applicant is, uh, proposing auto lifts. Uh, with, within the garage area to supplement the required parking spaces and to. Uh, possibly able to rental spaces to the public. Uh, staff added a condition that requires the lifts to be. Used as, uh, to not be used as public parking spaces. And this is due. To a staff concern, um, that the code may not allow, um. Uh, you know, parking for, as a standalone use. Uh, and there's also concerns, uh, that it would be a code enforcement. Uh, it would be difficult for code enforcement to let, regulate which parking spaces are gonna be used for public, uh, versus, uh, for the required uses. Um, it should also be noted that the building's, um, projection into the slope. Is, uh, relatively, relative. To, um, the adjacent buildings, uh, as you can see from this. Uh, site plan, uh, you can see the Malibu Inn, and then you can also see. The next building to the east, uh, and you can, if you were to draw a string line between those buildings, you would see. That this building is somewhere in between those buildings. Um, next slide. So, um, the project is requesting, uh, four variances. Uh, the first, uh, variance is to allow. Um, non-exempt grading for commercial, uh, development. To exceed the maximum allowed of one thousand one hundred and eighty cubic yards. Uh, to, um, exceed by a hundred and sixty-eight cubic yards. Uh, the second variance is for construction on steep slopes. Uh, and these would be slopes are steeper than three to one. Uh, the third variance is a variance to allow the construction of the. Uh, retaining wall in excess of the required twelve-foot, uh, height for retaining walls are an integral part of any, uh, building. Um, and the proposed retaining was, uh, um. Is required to provide a structural setback, uh, from the slope to the building. Uh, of fifteen feet, uh, and the overall, uh, height of that wall is twenty-one feet, ten inches. Above, um, adjacent grade, uh, not counting. The fifty-foot of retaining wall that's behind. Um, or it's supporting the. The basement, uh, but will be completely subterranean, um, uh, it's a subterranean basement that complies with the. Um, uh, uh, you know, basement rules. And the fourth, uh, variance. Is one for the parking spaces to be within the required front yard setback. Um, next slide, please. So, um, I kept this presentation short since we've already had a public hearing on this, uh, item and. Um, you know, uh, staff will make, uh, ourselves available for any questions that the commission. Uh, would have as. Condition and as mitigated, staff recommends that the. Uh, planning commission approves the proposed projects and adopts. The initial, uh, study and mitigated negative declaration. Uh, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Adrian. Um, but before we look at any, um, public comments here, I think it would be helpful for us to go through some disclosures if we have any new ones. Uh, and in particular, Commissioner Jennings, I, we got a couple of letters regarding, uh, potential or apparent bias. Um, I thought it would be helpful to give you a chance to respond to those questions. I, for one, was, uh, surprised not to have known anything about the, the fact that Doug Burge and you worked on your house together post-Woolsey. And I think it would be helpful to understand that. I, I think it's clear to people that. You know, you can hire somebody to do work here. And so the question is more in the nature of. W- w- were there any special deals? And, you know, according to Mr. Tobias's letter. A lot or everyone who has been touched by Woolsey has gotten some kind of special deal. So I think, uh, whatever clarity you can bring to this would be, uh, helpful as to why you. Shouldn't recuse as these people have suggested is what should happen now.
Sure, um. This was raised, there, there was a comment. A couple of weeks ago, I guess, about on this issue before Lester Tobias raised it. And, um. So I, I. Turned to Trevor and said, what about this? You know, I don't plan to make any response unless there's some legal requirement or some issue why I should recuse. And, uh, he advised me that, uh, as far as he knew, there was no requirement and that. We would. Move forward. I talked to Trevor again, uh, tonight. Uh, and we discussed the issue of whether there is some. Special deal. Doug Burge is my architect on my rebuild. I signed a contract with him. February, I guess, twenty nineteen. There was no negotiation about it. There was no discussion about rates or anything else. It was just. Here's the contract, I signed it. Since then, uh, he sends me bills, I send him. Money. Uh, I have no way of knowing what his usual. Or standard rates are, but, uh, Trevor, I think. Trevor can speak to it. He spoke to Burge. Tonight and was assured that. There's no special, um. Member of the planning commission. Rate that's allowed. And there's nothing that I'm getting.
Um, what, can I? I, I like to just ask, interjecting here, um, if. If there was no negotiation. How do, uh, we also have the allegation from Mr. Tobias that. The architects are the. They hold the power in these relationships. Maybe that's different with you, 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 as a commissioner and so forth, but. If there's no negotiation, why would the presumption not be that, that this was kind of, you know, a buddy buddy kind of thing?
Chair, Chair Hill? If I may jump in, I, I wanted to sort of lay out the framework here, what we're talking about, if that's okay.
Sure.
So. We're talking about a conflict issue that would require recusal. There's two types of. Um, issues that can come up. The first and the more common is dealing with FPPC and the Political Reform Act, and that is, is. Dealing with when you receive some type of compensation. Generally, a situation where you receive income from something else. And, um. In this case. Um, Commissioner Jennings is actually paying the money, not receiving any type of income. And so the issue then becomes whether he is getting some type of, you know, benefit to him. That is not available to anybody else. And so if he was getting a discounted rate. Or other type of special favor that's not available to others in his situation, then there would be, um. What, an item that would be income that you would need to disclose on his Form seven hundred, and then that would require, um, if it exceeds the, the, uh, limit, um, recusal on the item. And I think we can bring up Doug Burge. I think he's here tonight and he can, he can, uh, make a statement, but I did call him and he said that there, that he's. That Commissioner Jennings is not receiving any, um, special rate on it, but we can confirm it from him. And then the other type of, um, conflict we're talking about is a common law. Conflict, and that results when there is an unacceptable probability of actual bias on the person making a decision. So if they've. Pre-made a decision on a project, they publish something in advance. Pre-made a decision on a project, they publish something in advance, a statement about a project or something like that. That is where that starts to come in to be an issue, or if you have such a close relationship with somebody that you. That you're not able to be fair and unbiased and give a fair hearing to the. The applicant or to the public. And so. Based on the facts that we understand him here, there is not a requirement under the. By the FPPC that that he recuse himself. There's not been any time to evidence showing that he's received any type of income or or special rate. Then the only issue then would be whether the relationship between Commissioner Jennings and Doug Burge is such that he cannot be fair. And. You know, in general, there's not any type of prohibition about a council member or a planning commissioner hiring a local. Architect, attorney, doctor, anybody else in the city. In fact, it's often encouraged, you know, to to have. Local people to hire, hire locally and more familiar with the codes. So that alone does not create a type of bias or situation there. But I asked Commissioner Jennings whether there is some type of relationship between him and Mr. Burge that would prevent him from. Being fair and impartial in any way in this hearing.
No, and again, to go back to the question that. Commissioner Hill raised. Yeah, when I go, when I have had. Too much discussion with surgeons lately. I don't go in and say, how much is the surgery gonna cost me? Am I getting your best rate? You know, and similarly, you. In professional relationships, you don't do that. Nobody has ever suggested to me that this is some sort of a discounted rate. And if Doug Burge were giving me some sort of a discount. In order to influence my decisions, it would be pretty silly not to tell me about it or not to get the word to me somehow that I was getting some sort of a break. And you know, when I first thought about it, you know, the applicant here. Is Mr. Hakim or the Hakim family. It's not the verge. I'm pretty clear that that. An architect's compensation isn't determined by. Whether the project gets approved or not. Architects, as I can figure, they get paid either way. And so it's not really a financial issue with him. It might be, there might be some additional work. That would be done if the project gets approved, that wouldn't be otherwise. But the other thing I was thinking about is, you know, what about his soils engineer? I mean. I've got a soils engineer who appears in front of us on a regular basis. I've got. A septic engineer who appears in front of us more often and, you know, it's like the architect. I didn't quiz Doug to say whether, you know, is this? Is this the best rate you can give me? Am I getting a better rate than than anybody else? The discussion didn't take place. I bitch about the fees a lot. I'll tell you that. I complain about the fees. My project went into planning again. Yesterday. My initial contract with Doug was, like I say, in February of twenty nineteen. So. If I'm getting a discount, it certainly doesn't feel like it to me. I paid him a lot of money.
Because this is. This is for the record here. I wonder if we want to give Doug the chance to say a word or two. At least give him the opportunity. I don't necessarily, you know. Doug, I'm asking Rebecca, can you open his mic and just see if he wants to make a comment? Is he in the room?
I believe IT would need to do that.
You can actually do it, but I don't see Doug in the room.
Okay.
Yeah, if he can raise his hand, but I don't see him.
He might be with Stephen Hakim, is a guess.
Would you like to try that?
He was, yeah, if he could unmute Stephen Hakim, he was planning to be a part of the applicant team available for questions.
Hi, hi guys, this is Doug Burge.
Hey, howdy.
Hey, Commissioners. Yeah, no, listening to the whole thing. I'm with the Hakims at their offices. Yes, no, I got a call from Trevor. I was actually kind of shocked about this couldn't. But hey, listen, it's a fair question to ask. As far as any kind of fees and I don't know what other architects do, but. Because of the breadth of what we decided to do and our whole reboot effort, I. Unilaterally decided that I would lower our fees about twenty percent than what we would typically charge for a new home. And that's across the board for over thirty rebuilds. So. This nothing, nothing of extra favor was offered to Mr. Jennings, but as a as a rebuild. Customer, we both processing fees and architectural fees as a general. That is a lower fee than if it were just a regular house. And that's just because of what our involvement is with the community and the rebuild efforts.
Mr. Burge, that that rate is available to anybody, any project that you do that is doing a fire rebuild for the Woolsey Fire, is that correct?
That's correct. And I can prove that by contracts. So that's what we did in the very beginning. We voted. And decided as a firm, it was more important to get people back on their feet and that was the important part. And Mr. Mrs. Jennings are just happened to be one of those phone calls.
Okay, thank you, Doug. That's helpful. Do any other commissioners have anything they want to reflect on this, add to this particular discussion? No, okay. Well, let's move on to other disclosures then. Do we have other? Other new disclosures since the last meeting?
Nothing new for me.
John?
Yeah, I did write a. A memo to Trevor and. John Cotty about the issue of. The Regional Water Quality Board. I did not get an answer. But I will bring up the discussion. I don't know if I should do it now or later.
We can discuss during the hearing. I'm sorry, John, I did give you a call, but we weren't able to connect before the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, anybody else?
Yeah, I spoke with Doug Burge on the phone yesterday. Basically, it was just the nature of the call was. Him expressing his interest that we moved, that we switched the items, one A and one B. And that was pretty much the extent of it. And it's offered to ask, you know, answer any questions. That's it. Didn't learn anything new.
Great. I have several new discussions. One, I'm not sure if I made this at the last time or not, so I'll just briefly make it again that. When we found some apparent discontinuities with the story polls, they were due to a number of different small things where. There was maybe a differential of a foot somewhere and. Found that the polls we were looking at, for some reason, had one foot marks on them at actually fourteen to fifteen inch intervals. So when we were counting the number of feet, it was different than somehow they were mismarked. We sorted that all out. I'll also just re-mention since Stephen Hakim in his letter said that there's. No way that they're using the billiard room as event space. That we did in fact talk to everybody on site at the time. Confirmed that that was typical event space use, so.
Craig?
Yes.
That's the next hearing.
That's okay. You're right. Well, then, my disclosures about parking, well, this this kind of bleeds into this one, though. On Saturday, December fourth, I went over to the Surf Rider motel. And checked with the manager there, Scully, to to try to understand what their parking requirements are, what their. How they, what their function is, because they have twenty rooms also. They have a rooftop bar, basic food service. They had eight employees on duty, a manager, two front desk assistants, three kitchen. Two bartenders on the roof. Bartender slash waitstaff. So that's eight. They said that was typical and that that didn't count the two cleaners nor the, and they don't have any valets, so. If we're looking at something comparable here on the site, we're probably looking at an average of ten employees. Also, I learned that while. Surf Rider has three parking spaces nominally allotted to staff like this motel. They. They average eight plus employees who arrive earlier in the day. They park on PCH, but they still need to rent. Five spaces from the Aviator Nation Lot. And Stephen Hakim said, well, we can get rid of that at any time. But Scully was pretty clear that they depend on those spaces completely and continuously and don't know what they would do without them. So that seems like a bit of a roadblock there. And again, the applicant here suggests those guys are biased about this, but. I have been there several times and experienced that the parking area is completely inadequate there. So I think the last thing we'd want to do is. Reduplicate the same thing on this motel site. I also, on that day, while I was inside at the Surf Rider, heard loud music. And I, when I came outside, I found that there was sort of DJ level music being. The Malibu Inn and it was in fact being used as an event space for that evening. So the notion that they're not doing it. Is just not accurate. And finally, when I left, there was no way I could go east from the driveway. And from from any of those driveways. And so I ended up eventually going out and. Instead of going all the way to Webway, I pulled up short into the parking lot at. What's it called? The first shopping center there and did a loop through the parking lot and came out Cross Creek. So that that was the. The move that somebody who lives in town will have to make. They know you can do that through that that other parking lot. Let's see, I think that's all my, that's all my disclosures. So with that.
Oh, you have another one?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Did somebody else have a? No? Okay. Oh, yeah, I also, I talked to John Cotty this afternoon too about these, this issue and about the. Waterboard question too. So I don't think there's anything necessarily new coming out of that. Are there any quick questions for staff that we need to ask now that would be helpful to ask before the public? Otherwise, let me just give you a quick sense of where we're headed here. We'll take whatever public comments we we have. And then conceptually, I think it'll be helpful for us to distinguish sort of three categories of issues here. The first being, are there any threshold questions, things that maybe new information or things that we have to address? Right off the top. And. Then the second section being like the really critical sort of deal breaker kinds of issues. And if we get through those and if we're still. If we run a positive like this, looks like it's going to be approved, then there's a third category of of. Considerations and conditions that we might want to be putting on things. So in your thinking, when we raise issues, try to think about. What are the initial questions? What are the big critical issues? And then what are the things that we can save for? Any wheeling and dealing, as it were, towards the end. With that, let's open the public hearing. Rebecca, who, who do we have ready to go?
We would begin with the applicant team with Stephen Hakim.
Of course. And so those guys have. I guess they get fifteen minutes again here now, right? So let's do that. And I know you guys are savvy and understand that you can. Save some time at the end for rebuttal. So with that. Maybe maybe good to tell us who's going to be speaking.
Yes, this is Alexander Hakim.
Hi, Alexander.
Hi, Chair, Chair Hill. How are you? We're ready to go whenever, whenever you guys let's.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Chair Hill and the Planning Commission. It is a pleasure to speak before you again here today. I also wanted to welcome Chair Wettin, who I know has been brought in at halftime of this hearing. We greatly appreciate your time and consideration as well. I am Alexander Hakim and I'm here with my brother Stephen representing the ownership. As you recall at the conclusion of the last hearing, it was asked of staff to verify the lot area and FAR, which we have done. And we have also recertified the story polls for the request of the commission. We've also answered other questions and concerns that have been brought up, which are addressed in our memo we sent to staff and the planning commission. I think it is important to reiterate again that this project is in a commercial visitor serving zone. And is zoned for a motel. We are not asking for a zone text amendment like the Sea View Hotel did. We are building this project within the strict FAR guidelines of the city. Again, this project is only seven thousand square feet, no bigger than a lot of houses in Malibu. We also have wholehearted approval from the Coastal Commission. We strive to listen to the voices of the community, which is how we ended up with this project. Again, as you might remember, we were going to do an office retail center. But most could agree that we did not need more retail in Malibu and there was a resounding need for additional motel rooms. Lastly, again, we wanted to point out all of the positive things this project will bring to the city. We will generate a tremendous amount of tax dollars for the city of Malibu. We will fill a much needed void the city so desperately needs in providing more affordable motel rooms. We will help curb Airbnb problems which has plagued this city. Chair Hill, I'm sure you remember about a year ago, you had called my brother Stephen. Pushing for an update as to when this project would be coming before you. As you had also agreed that the city could use the additional rooms. Could use the tax dollars and to help stop the Airbnb epidemic. We will also create a much better flow of traffic on the PCH by adding another point of ingress and egress. With a much larger turnaround than what is currently there for cars to better circulate. We have more than enough parking spaces to accommodate this project. This project by itself, without any parking variances, meets all the city codes and guidelines. With the conservative valet plan, which we have, which we have shared with you. We will also have an additional forty two parking spaces above what is required by the code. We are very much looking forward and ready to bring a first class operation with excellent service. That the city can be proud of. To this great city. Which is why it's important to please look at our revisions to the conditions of approval memo, so we can discuss ways in which we cannot be. At a competitive disadvantage with other motels and hotels. And have some conditions altered to help provide a better service and experience to our hotel motel guests. We would really like to focus on that memo at some point this hearing, as there are items that we think will only benefit this project and the city as well. The main items are the following. One, the hours of operation for liquor service. The hours of operation for liquor service were put as a placeholder as they were never discussed with the applicant. Similar to the Sea View Hotel, we would like to have the same hours of operation to be able to serve liquor. Seven AM to twelve AM Sunday through Thursday and seven AM to two AM Fridays and Saturdays. The hours of operation proposed are not feasible. Two, amplified sound. Amplified sound should not be prohibited. We are open to the same decibel level requirements set on other hotels and businesses in the immediate area. It is a nice feature in most hotels or motels to have some low level ambient music playing in the common areas. This helps create a much better guest experience and atmosphere. Lastly, lift parking. We intend to add lift parking spaces in the subterranean garage of this project that will be out of sight from the street. These lift parking spaces are a substantial cost and we would like to provide them as a service to the area and the community. Which is what Malibu wants. We should not be restricted to providing the lift parking to the public. Thank you for your time. As always, we are ready and available to answer any questions. And Doug is going to continue now.
Good evening, Commissioners. Doug Burge, the architect for the project. Just wanted to add a few more things. You know, there's a, there's a parking lot here now. What the public does not necessarily know is that. What looks like to be a public parking lot is the majority, about three quarters of that parking lot, which is actually. Only a total of right now in existing, let's say forty, which was highlighted by a planner, Adrian. Hernandez is that there's only about nine, seven to nine spaces depending on where they're located. Are really just open to the public because the majority are actually part of the. Project per easement next door and they're used for the project next door. When we propose this design, and I talked to the owners about this, I said, well, providing, you know, I did the Surf Rider and I understand that we have minimum requirements. And it's an average shift per space. And what we wanted to do is provide more parking. And so we know that that this property, because it's now shared by the restaurant next door. And we're going to have a new use, but an allowed use, is that we want to be able to provide more parking. So we are suggesting. To ask that you as a commission allow us to valet park our project and provide the much required and needed. Parking that would be great that could public could use, not just nine spaces, but potentially up to twenty spaces. Where even if you just allowed valet, we would pick up twenty. But we've designed it and we lowered the garage a little bit deeper so we can get extra head heights, provide some lifts. And again, they would not be lifts that anybody would just drive into. These would be provided by a valet parking person. And so. You know, we we know that this is a use right now. We can use, you have to think of this project as, yes, it's a motel. Twenty rooms, which is very low impact, but it's something that would be used by the public and the motel itself. Which reiterated and we've proven with the Surf Rider, this is, we can't be thinking of these places as just for the for the tourists. These are all used. When we want our folks that are in town, our friends are in town, or when there's a natural disaster, when you stay at a motel or a hotel and they have the generators working. When we want our folks that are in town, our friends are in town, or when there's a natural disaster, when you stay at a, at a motel or a hotel, and they have the generators working, and you're able to stay there. Whether you had a leak in your house from fire or flood or whatever. So we look at this as a service, as 109 hotel rooms in Malibu, we need motel rooms. And this is a incredible use. We're then able to have the parking also increased. That's, that's there now as a use. We can provide that. So the project itself is the been designed and it fits into the hill. And there's going to be discussions on wall heights and other things. And this was a, when I inherited the project, there was an exposed wall that was. High behind the building, and that's why we pushed the whole building back and, and, and took the majority of this wall. So there's only a portion of it that sits up behind the building. And that's what we were told to restore a pole. So with the end of the day. I think what the commission has to decide is that there's a lot of things you can talk about what's wrong about anything and what's wrong about a project. But I think what's important here. Is to decide what's right about this project and why it would be an amazing asset to the city of Malibu. And we reserve our time for rebuttal. Thank you.
The next public speaker will be Scott Dittrick.
You might have to circle back to Scott. He doesn't seem to be connected to audio. He's in the meeting, but having some trouble.
Okay. You guys didn't even hear me. Let's go on to the next person.
Let's move forward to Judy Edinger.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks. Go ahead, Judy.
I feel like I'm double, I'm on both. Should I mute one of them?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay.
You've got, you've got two devices going in your room. You, you need to have only one in the room.
Okay, I'm disconnect this. How's that?
That's better.
Okay. Thank you for letting me speak in support of the Malibu Inn motel. After reading about the new proposed hotel for Malibu called the Malibu Inn motel, I would like to bring up the point. That a 20 room motel would be great fit for Malibu, since it would be considered more of a boutique hotel. I really like the design, but the use of the exterior wood, it looks like it would blend nicely into the current landscaping. I do agree that we need a new hotel and new growth in Malibu. It has been long overdue. I have a lot of relatives that come out. From out of town that would really enjoy a pool with a restaurant, especially in that location. With the view of Malibu and the ocean. I look forward to having a new hotel for my friends and family to come visit Southern California. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
And Chair Hill, I apologize. Perhaps we could check to see if anybody would like to raise hands if they intend to donate minutes.
That's a good thought. Are there any donating, donators out there? Raise your hand on, in the Zoom meeting if you, if that's your intent.
And. On the technical side, are you able to go out to gallery view? Okay, I don't see anyone raising hands.
To raise your hands, click on the reaction button. And then there's a, there's a button that says raise hand if you do want to donate time. Otherwise, the speakers will be called on. In order to.
Yeah. I, I should have mentioned this first, but I think it would be helpful for all of us and for all, any speakers. optionally, we don't want to require anything, but it might be helpful to know your relationship, whether you're. A resident or friend of the developer, whether you live in the city or not, just something about what's your relationship to this project. So who's next?
And next would be Joe Drummond.
Joe, hi, welcome. Can you hear us? Can we hear you?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Honorable Planning Commission. So the policy for environmental health review on of development projects within the Civic Center prohibition area states that the city policy for environmental health review of development projects. Located within the prohibition area is as follows. Phase one and phase two vacant lots, all new online onsite wastewater disposal system discharges are prohibited by the regional board through the basin plan amendment. With the exception of those projects identified in table 4ZZ of the adopted resolution. These projects have been deemed entitled for a new onsite wastewater treatment system by the regional board. All other new development projects. That include a new sanitary waste discharge through a new outs will be referred to the regional board for concurrent approval with the development review by the city. Regional board approval for a project's wastewater discharge must be obtained prior to any. Development approvals or permits. I've been in contact with the regional board since December 8th, and they have yet to be contacted by the city regarding this, and they are looking into this. In reading resolution number for R1403. 003 from the State of California Regional Water Quality Control Board, Los Angeles Region dated February 6, 2014, it states. On November 5, 2009, the regional board adopted resolution blah, 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 an amendment. To chapter four of the water quality control plan for the coastal watershed of Los Angeles and Ventura Counties prohibiting onsite wastewater disposal systems in Malibu Civic Center area. Upon the effective date, the 2009 basin plan amendment immediately prohibited all new discharge from OWDSs in the Malibu Civic Center area. With the exception of certain projects identified in table 4ZZ, which were deemed by the regional board to be existing OWDSs. So. The specific properties identified in table 4ZZ adopted by the regional board as part of the 2009 basic plan amendment were included based on the following criteria. A, the project had, as of November 5, 2009, progressed through the city's entitlement process because, one, the project proponent had submitted at minimum a complete application. Example, site plan, geology and biology reports and grading and drainage information. Two, the city for a new construction or remodel project, or two. The project was deemed complete, conditioned, or approved by the city planning commission. B, the project was a commercial property that had submitted a complete report of waste discharge to the regional board. The project consisted of public service facilities, being submitted only one day before the completely different project that was originally proposed. I don't know how this could have been done. And they do need to submit their new project to the regional. Board. That's just the bottom line. So I don't know how this can, can continue. I have some more, but I don't know if, if. Someone wants to donate time, but I'm fine.
Hey, thank you, Joe. Who do we have next?
Our next speaker will be Susanna Owens.
Susanna Owens, welcome. Susanna, are you there? Can you hear us? Can we hear you?
Unmute, sorry, unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Sorry, I'm using AirPods for the very first time. Hi, I'm Susanna Owens. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I have been following the project for a while now, and after reading through the staff reports in detail. I wanted to express my support for this motel project. I think it's commendable to see an applicant who's coming forward and staying within the zoning, which is permitted. I know that projects such as these take a great deal of time and money, and many other applicants have asked for many variances in order to better increase their bottom line or financial outlook on this project. I do not see any of this happening for this project. The only variances I see are four items, which you see on almost every new construction project in Malibu, such as grading or retaining walls. Without such variances, a great deal of Malibu would never have been built because of the challenging topic topography. I know sometimes we, as a city, continue to look at what we might find wrong with certain projects, but I see a lot of positives with this one. They don't have more events other than the allowable six TUPs per year, which appeases neighbors. They have an abundance of parking. Not sure when we have ever seen that before, from what I can remember. They're bringing thousands of, they're bringing hundreds of thousands in TOT to the city, which we need. They will deter vagrants in the area and create projects. Create a project many locals and visitors will be proud of for years to come. I do not support this project without looking at the facts, and the facts are that there are very little negatives and many positives for this motel. I totally support this project. Again, thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Okay, thank you, Susanna. Who's next?
Our next speaker is Nick Eleopolis.
Great. Hi, Nix. Are you there?
Hello, planning commission. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I also echo what Susanna just spoke about. I, I would like to express my support for the proposed motel. Across from the Malibu Pier. I've lived in Malibu, worked in Malibu. I've always been surprised, very surprised at how few lodging rooms are in Malibu. Laguna Beach, for instance, has over 30 hotels and 2,000 rooms with a population of 23,000. Well. Malibu has only 109 rooms with a population of about 13,000. And it's just, it's very surprising that Malibu has so few rooms for visitors, friends, and locals that will. Love to spend time in a motel with these kind of amenities. When friends and family come to visit, they always comment the lack of lodging. And Malibu is such a beautiful location. The rendering of the proposed hotel is beautiful. It's very well thought out. And it's perfectly located across from the Malibu Pier and Beach. There's a traffic signal across from the hotel that makes crossing the pier and beach easily accessible. The project's very well designed and includes subterranean grade level parking. Having more lodging will help alleviate the often unwelcome Airbnb use and help small businesses in Malibu severely affected since Woolsey. Also, I understand the height of the retaining wall has become a point of discussion, but almost all the commercial properties. Have laws of this height, including. 22610PCH, 22741, 22761, and 22917PCH. So I don't see why this has become an issue. The project, in my opinion, needs to be improved. It's only 20 units. It's only about 7,000 square feet, and will be a welcome addition to Malibu. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Who's next?
Our next speaker will be Brianna Iks.
Brianna, welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, members of the planning commission, keep allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Brianna, and I have followed many projects throughout the years here in Malibu. And I have never seen a development project come forward that was such a benefit to the city. I know that in the last year, we have had issues with our budget and 500,000 to a billion a year in TOT revenue is much needed. We all think about Airbnb problem, but why aren't we helping to improve this project? As far as I can see, the project is essentially a buy right project. They have an abundance of parking. I applaud this project and the city staff for working together. After so many years of this ugly parking lot across our beautiful Malibu Pier. Time this lot comes in line with the rest of the beautiful buildings in the area. Thank you for your time, and I would definitely support this project.
Thank you. And who's next?
And our next speaker will be Lisa Sokolov.
Lisa, are you there?
There we go. Hello, hi.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm a resident of Malibu, and my name is Lisa Sokolov, and I want, wanted to write this letter in strong support of this project. Having a new motel in Malibu is long overdue. I can't tell you the countless amount of times we have fam, family and friends wanting to come visit us in this great town, yet we have nowhere to stay. Malibu Beach Inn and Nobu are way too expensive. At times, there needs to be more options. I've been following closely the Sea View Hotel project, which was just approved, was about four times the size. And much more impactful. This is a small 7,000 foot project, which is staying within the guidelines of what it was zoned for, whereas Sea View changed the zoning entirely. If we can't get behind people applying for a project within its zoning rights, we are not doing our job as a city. This looks like a beautiful motel project that fits perfectly. In the immediate commercial visitor serving area. I am sure it will also help the surrounding businesses as well. Ownership and planning staff seem to have really done their due diligence and met all the code requirements. I'm tired of looking at that empty abandoned parking lot. It would be so nice to see some life and vitality brought to this section of Malibu. Not to mention all the jobs and revenue this project will bring to this great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And who do we have next?
Our next speaker is Bill Sampson.
Welcome, Bill.
I don't see Bill in the room.
Bill, are you not in the room? Okay, well, let's.
We'll circle back. The next speaker will be Lori Albert.
Were you unmuted? Okay. Hi, we're the Alberts, Lori and Steve Albert. We're 29 year residents of Malibu. And we're happy to support the Malibu motel. We recently gave a wedding for our daughter, and it was appalling that there really was not. A, a good selection of places for our guests to stay. You know what? My husband, Steve, pick up from here.
Right. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. To us as longtime residents, we live at 6924 Grasswood on Point Dune. We raised our family here. To us, this is an absolute no brainer. Why the city hasn't been encouraging this type of development is beyond me. Just to, to, to make full disclosure, I happen to be an architect. I do no work in Malibu. My practice is entirely in Los Angeles and other communities in Southern California. I've never met Doug, but I respect his work. I think this is a, a fine addition, and it, it does a few more things. What it does, it, there's a whole theory about defensible space. When you have empty lots. And no people, it's an opportunity for mayhem. When you have facilities like this, you animate the street, pedestrians are there. They populate the visitor service stores, restaurants, shops, what have you. And it just makes for a thriving area, and that is the whole point of development along PCH in this particular area. So for a lot of reasons, not least of all, of course, is just to serve a public that, that dearly needs this type of facility. There are also urban design positive issues about this project that are long overdue for the city. So. Lori and I are 100% behind this and look forward to its completion. And we don't have another wedding coming up, so we won't be able to direct more traffic there. But when visitors do come, we'll sure to make. Them know that this is a welcome addition to the community and a good place to stay. Thanks a lot, and I hope everything is approved.
Thank you. And who's next?
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Stella Allen.
Hi Stella, you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you, Commissioners, for letting me speak. I have a. I have a, my first issue is with the motel's parking in connection with Aviator Nation Malibu Inn. And I know everyone's been saying there's plenty of parking, but I, you know, I've seen, I've lived across the street for 23 years. And they have events of 2, 300 people at times. And it's just not possible for them to all park in that small parking lot of Malibu Inn. And if there's no overflow to the motel area, I'm not sure where all these people are going to park. So I don't think that is a valid argument that they've got there. Just last night, in fact, Aviator Nation had, had a large event, probably 80 to 100 kids. They look like Malibu High Kids, I guess. They were blasting music, started about eight o'clock and went to maybe 11 or 12, and they had the outdoor speakers on. Facing the parking lot, basically turned up all the way. I, I do have video of this. And inside, they, they had the doors wide open and just. Tons of kids just, you know, parting away there. So I know they're having events, it's loud music. They can't be trusted with the amplified music. Outdoors, like as Mr. Hakim was saying, that they have low level amplifiers, never been low level. It's always, always at the top, top of the scale there. So that I have an issue with as well. This is also, I mean. as well. This is also, I mean, you're gonna have a hotel. There's already five hotels within a one-and-a-half-mile, you know, radius here from Motel M and Nobu and Carbon Beach Inn, Surf Rider. So there's a lot of hotels in this one area. It's very congested. I mean, if you're gonna have hotels and motels, maybe we could spread it out a little bit. That would and I think that's my two concerns, which kind of ties into the parking permit aspect, but if you can carry these arguments over to that, and I'll talk later. Thank you for your time. That's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Stella. Who's next?
Our next speaker will be Lonnie Gordon.
Hi, Lonnie, are you are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. I had actually ceded my minutes to Ryan, but I do have a few comments.
Well, hang on, hang on, hang on. If you're giving minutes to Ryan, then you don't get to make comments. If you want to make comments, then you don't give minutes to Ryan.
Okay, then I'll make my comments.
Okay, give her about ten more seconds, because I was just talking there.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay.
I appreciate the fact that people want to have this hotel motel. I think it's a hotel or two, because they're right next to each other. But my concern is the parking, as has been explained by other people. And the water usage, because we are now on water restriction. And these hotels, people who use these hotels are not going to be cognizant, most of them, of water restriction and how it will be used. Some planners just jump to these dicey conclusions on their computers without bothering to go into the field. They're critically differentiating between self-serving junk evidence submitted by permit applicants and real science-based evidence. I have great concerns about the amount of dirt that's going to be taken out from this area and that we really, really do not need another hotel motel. I also have children who come to visit, and they stay in Agura because the prices out here are high. I don't know what the prices will be at this hotel, hotels, but I am concerned about the parking for the staff and the people who are there, the music on the decks, and everything else that will be allowed. So that's my input. Thank you very much for listening.
Okay, thank you, Lonnie. Who's next?
Our next speaker is Pat Healy.
Hi, Pat, you there?
Can you hear me?
There you are, yes.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm speaking for the Malibu Coalition for Slow Growth. This overly ambitious project doesn't meet cities' development criteria and needs and needs an excessive number of variances to build it. Why have development standards if they're not going to be followed, allowing a developer the right to build any project it desires? Variances are not supposed to be granted as a way to circumvent development rules. Just two examples. Require, this project requires a fifty-foot-high retaining wall, one twelve-foot maximum is allowed. A forty-eight-foot-high structure, when a two-story twenty-eight structure is the maximum allowed. The height is not measured from grade and includes an above-grade parking lot. To measure grade from several feet up the slope instead of from ground levels is a misinterpretation of the code. And then to call the obviously above-ground parking structure subterranean is creating a fiction, which was never the intention of the code. The applicant's traffic and geological study even states it's a three-story building. A code-compliant building can be built on the site. If you grant these variances, it will set a dangerous precedent for the reconstruction of older buildings along the east end of PCH. And then the question is, when can it be built, a project here? It's doubtful that the Regional Board would allow this project, since it's in an area where new projects are banned until they're hooked up to the Civic Center Waste Treatment Plant. This new, this is a new project. The water generated by the motel will be much greater than the wastewater of the tiny shopping center that was previously approved. If you're thinking of approving this project, the city should prior to its approval check with the Regional Board to determine whether a twenty-room motel is allowed to be constructed prior to the area's hooked up to Phase Three. It is especially important, since the proposed treatment plant does not meet the required setback from the structure and doesn't have the required a hundred percent redundancy. This project is not zoned for a hotel, and that's what is actually being built. It is not a motel. And if you're gonna approve this project, the developer has to update its CQ studies before it can be approved. The proposed project is located in the most congested and overdeveloped area of Malibu, and the project needs a current traffic circulation and parking study. Also, the cognitive impacts of the, of this project and surrounding projects. A noise study is needed to determine the impact on surrounding neighbors, not only up slope across, but across PCH and next door, where there's a synagogue and a school. And the rabbi told me he is opposed to this project.
I'm sorry, we have reached time.
Okay, thank you. Please deny the project.
Thank you, Pat. Who's next?
Our next speaker is Kathy Harvey.
Kathy Harvey. Are you there?
I don't see them in the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Our next speaker is Jefferson Wagner.
Jefferson Wagner.
Okay, unmuted.
Yeah.
My unmuted.
There you are. We can hear you.
Thank you very much, Craig, and Commissioners, thank you for your service to the city. Just wanted to hit a few bullet points on this project. It's I'm a local merchant and businessman about a quarter miles east or south, depending on your designation and travel, at the surf shop there, at another Hakim building. I'm also the sub-concessionaire at the Malibu Pier for the last twenty years, with membership Malibu Pier Partners, myself and Alexander Lef. And as a former council member, people often call for an opinion or certain, on a certain topic that affects them or their neighborhoods. And Jeff Jennings will tell you that. I'm sure he's getting the calls all the time, asking, what do you think of this? What do you think of that? So on 1B, the Hakim Hotel, I had three phone calls pretty much about this project and other topics were covered during the conversations. But on this topic, one resident nearby in Sweetwater Canyon was concerned about the traffic and the slope stability. I am told the property owner that you should take a look at the geological studies, because I'm not I'm an amateur at igneous and clay and shale. Another property owner in Sarah Retreat asked about increased congestion at the pier signal and then backing up to Sarah Retreat Main Entrance. I told that resident, that residence representative to consult the traffic study. I didn't know if there was one. I took a, kind of, my fingers crossed on that comment. Another business owner locally asked if the hotel was like Norm's in size. The story polls were up, so I told that person to judge it by the story polls in relation to the size, and that it was only about half the amount of rooms of Norm's hotel. And then I read a well-crafted letter from Scott Dietrich about traffic impacts. And there were several comments about what will happen to the Malibu Inn, which was a concern to some other neighbors as well. The Malibu Inn is an iconic landmark. It's in between the Jack-in-the-Box in this proposed project. And I did have a meeting with the Hakim family, Steve and Alex and Cambees, and personally, they said to me face-to-face that nothing will happen to the Malibu Inn, that they had a long lease there, and that it has nothing to do with this hotel or the project, only that there were some parking results from the Malibu Inn on that property. So I believe the Hakims have been very fair with me on my lease at my building that I formerly used to own, two-two-seven-seven-five. I wanted to add this comment on my part. I doubt that the Hakim family would add impacts to one property for use of another. I think if you own five properties on PCH within a mile of each other, your idea would be to make sure that you don't impact one of your properties with another one of your property projects. So I would have to believe.
I'm sorry, sir, we are at time.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Good luck tonight, gentlemen. You'll do your best. Thank you.
Thank you, Jefferson.
Our next speaker is Ryan, and if they are in the meeting, I would love to get a last name.
Hello, yes, this is Ryan Ebby. Wow, a lot of stuff to consider here. I had spoken about the hotel that Norm Haney's building, the Seaview, Seavista, whatever he calls it. We're in a severe and ongoing water shortage and drought, and it's not just that that the Water Board ought to be concerned with. It's it impacts Malibu and our ability to develop and add ten percent more onto all the houses on Point Dune and in Malibu Park, because the water main isn't getting any bigger. It's only thirty inches, and it's got to serve all of western Malibu. It's got to go over the creek, and it has cracked up and left Malibu stranded without water in August of nineteen ninety-nine for three days. And it can and probably will happen again. It's just getting older. And the more pressure they put in it to try and get more water through it out to western Malibu, the more susceptible it is with age to a utility disaster for Malibu, which could occur during a fire. Fire season is year-long now. So I, I say the same thing with no discrimination to the Hakims, that we don't need a spa hotel that is a water waster. Build yourself a wonderful project that has no tubs in it, please. Thank you. And be a part of the solution, if that's what you want to propose. But what I'm saying is, this isn't the half of it. A twenty-room hotel, I want to see the other half. Where's the expansion, the Phase Two? Is that in Phase Three? Does that go where the Malibu Inn and Aviator Nation are? Because that's an underutilized use. It's non-conforming. The parking sucks. It's hard to make a go of it at the inn, because there's no place to park. So, you know, what's the deal? It's, it looks like incremental development. Now, we heard about that, with these houses going in where they submit under the fee waiver, and then they got a major expansion that they submit, you know, either the next day after they get their first approval, or it's all designed to be modular and expanded upon from the get-go. And, you know, I don't know if you need a bar across the street from a pier. Maybe it is a better place for a hotel, but I don't think it's a genuine proposal. It's not big enough to make a go of it. It is a hotel with meeting rooms and a bar open to the public. And by that definition, which is an international standard and definition for a diamond rating, this is a hotel and needs forty dedicated parking spaces just to the operation of the hotel. And anything else, I think, is still required in Malibu, because nobody's gonna walk to the hotel. And it's important not to co-mingle and encumber the adjacent property for its future uses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you. Could we see if Scott Dietrich has resolved his technical issues?
Scott, you have a good connection there?
I hope so.
There you are.
You hear me, Craig? Thank you, and thank you, Commissioners. I think we all ought to reread the Malibu Vision Statement. Because I don't think this passes muster at all. In the center of Malibu, in the most crowded area, you want to take away parking, and we know what that means. We see what the parking for Nobu does. All along Pacific Coast Highway, the employees for Nobu take all the spots. Not visitors, not people wanting to shop at Jefferson Surf Shop, for example. Nobu hogs those spots, and that's exactly what happened, will happen here. They do not have enough spots. We should require an employee study to see just how many people are gonna be there, and then we'll know how many cars. Not even allowing for the hotel guests to park. But take the most crowded spot in Malibu and make it worse? Do you really want Newport Beach in Malibu? If so, approve this project. But I don't think so. I stand against it. And I really hope that you guys will go back, protect Malibu, protect our rural character, and just deny this project. It's the wrong project at the wrong time in the wrong spot. But if you have to approve it, for whatever reason, require a development agreement so that at least the city gets something out of it, as we did with Seaview. Seaview is an existing property that converts an office building and would result in less traffic. Not so with this one. But Seaview is gonna pay a million bucks and fix some of the water problems, putting another three hundred grand at Topanga for pumps or four hundred. Require that same amount, be donated back to the city. But basically, just don't, don't approve this, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott.
I believe Bill Sampson is now in the meeting.
Let's try Bill. You there, Bill?
I'm here. Thank you.
All right, we hear you.
Good evening. Scott just mentioned the vision statement and the mission statement. My wife conducted a dramatic reading of both of them at the city council last night, because in her opinion, the council members have lost sight of those. Once again, we have that problem. If we're gonna have laws in this country, in this state, in our district, in our city, everybody needs to obey them. This project does not. It's that simple. Jeff's a lawyer. I don't know if the rest of you guys are or not. I don't know what everybody does. But the idea of the vision statement and the mission statement isn't say, here, we got some laws, but we don't mean it. We're just kidding. I park in this place in that area once a year. That's for the Woody Parade. It is a nightmare down there. It's a nightmare to drive through it. You guys know that. The pandemic has kept me from going to Santa Monica much too often, because it's kind of hard to play in a band if you're a trumpet player wearing a mask, so I can't go there. But when I do, I like to go play in my bands, and it's a nightmare getting through there. You got Nobu going all over there. You've got left turns. You've got U-turns. You've got drunks coming out of the bars. And this just adds to it. If they comply with the law, I can't complain, but they're not complying with it. Just say, come back with something where you don't have to get variances for everything. Comply with the vision statement. Comply with the mission statement. This is not rocket science. It's pretty simple. You don't want to obey the law, why are you in your positions? These things need to be sent back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Is there anybody else?
I don't see Kathy Harvey listed as being in the meeting unless Alex happens to see that. I believe that is everyone that signed up to speak this evening.
Kathy or anybody else, if you're in and you wanted to speak, you can electronically raise your hand in the Zoom if you, Kathy, happen to be on somebody else's account, for example. So we'll wait for a moment for any hands, and then we'll move on. Okay. Doesn't look, I think, I think next we need to give the applicant their rebuttal time.
Yes.
So let's, let's go back to them.
Yeah, good evening, Commissioners. This is Doug Burge, architect, talking on behalf of the project. Just a couple of points to be made is that in C2 engineering, Is that in C two engineering is the wastewater consultant for this project, and John Yerslawski has been working. Pretty much most of the projects along the corridor here and throughout Malibu for more years than I think I've been in working in Malibu. So he's well aware of the rules of the Regional Water Quality Board, this is already on the exempt list. What clearly, what, after talking to them is that they, they made a recommendation and they basically said is that. The planning department has to determine what is the final approval from the planning department before they make the approval. They need to know how many rooms that they end up with, how, how many, what, what kind of water usage, et cetera, et cetera. So they've already talked to them about the previous project, but when we're ready to talk to them after this hearing, then we would talk to them. And that's what John says, that's the, the way you do it, it's not the cart before the horse, so that's, that's on that. We keep, there's been different references talking about motels and hotels. The Malibu Beach Inn across the street is, is technically and legally a C B two project and is a hotel. This is only a motel, it has no restaurant, it has food service, which we were able to get the same food service set up. As we have at the Surf Rider, and that's a, a nice feature to have, it's not a restaurant, it's not open to the public. There's no additional public parking for a restaurant, there's no meeting room, somebody alluded to meeting rooms, I don't, maybe, maybe we can all meet in. A hotel room, I guess you could meet in there, but it's not a dedicated meeting room, so it's a hotel motel. And it's used for hotel motel guests only, twenty rooms. We again have parking availability that we would like to offer. Because this is the type of project where again, it's a variance type project, variances are offered to something that have unusual conditions. We're sharing the existing property with the restaurant next door, so we have to accommodate their parking. The other thing that needs to happen is that we also have to accommodate additional septic loads that are from that restaurant on this property. So between the septic loads, the parking and the additional parking and where the building is placed, is that all of that comes into the architecture. It is definitely the way you measure height on a hillside, there's no sections within the house, the building itself, that is more than two stories high. And that's all within the code, the planning department's been looking at this for years, and we've been working with them. We've also within recently, since so we had some commissioner comments from the last time we had the hearing. We came back with answers to all those, and we feel that we've been able to look at this thing six ways to Sunday. And we're very proud of this project, and we look forward to any further comments you have. Do you guys have any other comments?
No, and I just also want to really thank the commission and especially the staff. You know, they've been working with us on this project for many, many years now. And they work tirelessly for the city and we really appreciate them. Helping and guiding us to work within the confines of the code. To what we, again, as Doug alluded to, feel is something that we can stand behind and be proud of. And make the neighbors proud, make the residents proud and the visitors proud. So we'll just close with that, thank you.
Okay. So I think with that, we're ready to close the public hearing. And we're back to the table. I mentioned that there were some threshold matters, I think if, if any of you have just any short. Very quick rejoinders to what you've just heard from the public, just to make any quick clarifications, that's something that might be appropriate now. Otherwise, I, I wanted to get into what looks to me about three big threshold issues. John, is yours kind of quick or?
Well, I wanted to make sure that we had this. Regional Water Quality Board is the threshold issue because I disagree with several of the statements made by the applicant and some other people. And I have an answer coming from Trevor, I assume. If that, if that is, if it's not on four Z Z legally. It's over, as far as this hearing goes.
Yeah, my.
Yeah, that has to be a threshold issue, that's all I want to say.
Yeah, that, that's, that's on my list, my understanding, talking to John Cotty about that was that, that. Yes, it, that four Z Z list is about projects, not about addresses. And then in fact, the project that was on that list was the twenty-ten project. Now, so the question is whether, I think, and Doug just kind of raised the issue of, you know, cart, horse, however that goes. I, I, what I understand is that the, the water board looks at the application, they don't need a, an approved project. They just, they, they just look at the application, so yeah, John.
Yeah, well, no, it's very clear, the city has a memo on it. It was dated. May twenty-twenty. It's called the Public Policy Environmental Health Review for Development Projects Within the Civic Center Prohibition Area. This is a city document. And it says vacant lots. All new onsite wastewater disposal systems discharges are prohibited by the regional wa- water board through the basin plan amendment. With the exception of those projects identified on table four Z Z of the adopted resolution. These projects have been deemed entitled to new onsite wastewater systems. By the regional board. All other new project developments that include new sanitary wastage. Waste discharge through the new O W B T S will be referred to the regional board for concurrent approval. With the development of the review by the city, regional board approval for the project's wastewater discharge. Must, must be obtained prior to, prior to any development approvals or permits. Period, that's, that's the city's interpretation. Now, I, I. I read the Hakim's letter and they call it, we're on the address list, which you mentioned. But this is very specific, it says project, not address. It doesn't exempt. Future projects, only projects presented at the time that the M O U was written. And it's very puzzling to me why staff will not. After all we've tried at the last meeting, will not ask them. According to Joe Drummond, they have, they admit they have never been contacted. Now, the reason this is important is obviously. With the players at play in that part of Malibu, this is going to be a pick. Okay, it's also going to probably go to city council, probably go to, to coastal commission. And the water board is going to step in at some point. And. If they step in and say, this is a project, not an address. We cannot, according to city's interpretation, approve it. We cannot give a development approval tonight. That's really important, because we can go through hours of other things. But this is city letterhead. And. The words, the words differ from what, what we've been presented. It's not an address, it's a project, and it's not the same project.
I'll, I'll interject too, that I, I, I read the same memo, I got the same reading, again, John Cotty heard this, reads it the same way. I think the, the significance is this, that what we heard from staff previously, well, you know, they, they proved it once, they, they. There's no reason why they shouldn't, what, you know, it's not really any different, but. It is roughly, they're now asking for roughly twice the water usage and four times the fixture units. So it's, it's substantially different in, in the level of water usage that's being asked. And the significance of that might have to do with the groundwater and whether the groundwater does any mounding there. You know, if you've got the tertiary treatment, how is that interacting with the bedrock and the, the system at the, the two places next door? The Jewish Center or the restaurant itself, or the, the Malibu Beach Inn across the street? How does, how does the output of this interact with those, and I don't think that's something that any of us have seen. So it seems like the water board weigh in is important, Trevor's got, John, John Trevor's got his hand up, let's, let's hear from him.
Okay, well, I, I just. I don't care about the details. The water board is going to have to look at it at some point. But it's very, very clear here that they say concurrent and may not issue permits. They need to be looking at it now, they, our city says they do, and we refuse to even call them. Okay, and, and they say we can't issue a permit unless it's concurrent. That's, it couldn't be clearer. And that's, that's what bothers me about this whole process, because we're going to go through this huge process, probably a year and a half of appeals. And it's not going to be legal.
I hear you, John, Trevor, what's your comment?
All right, well, John, you're absolutely right that the water board is going to weigh in on this and it's going to be their interpretation, this is the water board's order. After, after I, I got your correspondence, I followed up, I pulled up the old order itself and. As, as you mentioned, it's, it's, it says, you know, the, the projects on the list, an attachment Z Z. Those are exempt, and those projects don't need to have concurrent zoning, so if it's not considered to be the same project that was on that list. Then it will need, would need concurrent zoning, so this project is going to be, is going to depend on the order from the, the water board. And their interpretation of whether this constitutes the same project or if it does not, the city can't make that determination. They have their own order, they're going to have their own interpretation on it, and that's going to be resolved in two ways. Number one, there's a condition, and Adrian actually proposed a many that condition to make it clearer and stronger. To make it clear that this project can't go forward unless it's signed off by the regional board is. As exempt as, as approvable under their prohibition order. The second piece is that they have their own enforcement mechanisms that can come through, and if this project is prohibited and is not exempt, then. They'll, they have their own enforcement mechanisms to deal with it, and the applicant will have to go and apply to them and, and seek recourse if they wants to get around. Their prohibition, it's not the city's prohibition order, it's the regional boards, so they're the ones who will make the, the call on that one.
Right, now how do you answer the concurrent and the fact that they're supposed to be looking at it now?
It says concurrent only for ones that are not on that list.
No, they say, they say only for projects that are not on that list, not addresses. This project is not on that list.
Yes, e- exactly, well, it's, it's whether the regional board considers this to be the same project or not, that's the interpretation, so if they consider it the same project. Then it is exempt, and that's, that's the argument.
And my problem here is, we're here to give a permit. We are having a hearing to give a planning permit.
Our permit won't supersede the, the prohibition order, the prohibition order is its own, it, it's its own piece, its own enforcement. We can't overrule it, that's not what this project will do, this, this project is still subject to their approval.
Yes, but it says it must be concurrent and it may not be given, may not be given. We may not be given, give a permit, so.
Yeah.
Do you handle appeals? If this permit is not legal, how do you appeal it?
If it, if it's, if, if the regional board interprets it as this is, this is not the same project. Then they're not going to, they're not going to approve it and the project won't be able to be constructed. You can't get it, they can't get into plan check, right, Adrian, unless they, unless they get that sign off from the regional board.
They can't get into planning. That we are supposed to be showing them this project right now, that's what they're saying, concurrent. And we're refusing to do it. We are refusing to do it, we asked at the last meeting to have staff do it.
It, it has been deemed complete, you'd think that would be the point at which it gets sent over to the water board.
I, I think, I think what Trevor's saying is. That we made the interpretation that this is the same project, well, however, we're not the final word on this. If this was not the same project, then they would not be consistent with the M O U. And we would not be able to process application without it being concurrent. Concurrently reviewed by the Water Quality Control Board. But it, this is, this, this remains to have the same application. Number and will submit it, it, it continues to be processed by the same, you know, property owners. And we never. We never closed their application, it has remained to be active now. As we all know, projects change over time, and the project that's initially submitted is never the same project that. Ends up getting approved, now in this case, you may say that, that the changes are substantial. But like Trevor said, I think that's a determination for the water district to make. And I'm not sure.
But they covered that.
Okay, okay.
Let me just say one more thing, Craig, they covered that in their M O U. They said. New development will be referred to the regional board for concurrent approval with a development review by the city. That couldn't be clearer. Concurrent review with development review by the city, that's what we've been doing for the last.
Provided this would be a new project that was not on that list, I think we're, you know, we're seeing.
Circles.
Okay, yeah.
We are, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I guess the question would be, if, John, what would be the, to be clear, what's the proposed remedy? If you're saying the remedy should be to continue this until we hear from them, that's what you're proposing?
The remedy would be to follow their M O U and refer to them. That's what they require, they can come back and say, we don't need to look at it, we already took them off the list, or, yeah, we got to look at it. What we're saying is we'll hide it from them until we get it in here, we go through. Two sets of appeals, spend a year and a half and bazillion hours of staff time. And then they say, oh, you didn't ever told us about this.
Yeah, well, Adrian.
That's what they're asking for in this M O U, that's what the city signed, that's what the city council approved.
Adrian, we, we asked for this before. Why, why wouldn't we be showing it to them already, why wouldn't we have sent it to them? If, I, I mean, there, there's some debate about how, how substantially different is it or isn't it the same project, fine. But given that debate, why not just say, sure, let's show it to, to them again, and why haven't we done that yet since we asked for it?
All right, so I'm glad you asked the question, because I, I did bring this up in my, my presentation. You and John Massa asked for that information.
Yeah.
However, the majority of the planning commission voted. For it not to be a requirement before this item came back to you. So there was a decision, it was voted on, it was decided that that was not a requirement for this item to come back to you. Now, now, I, I will, I will say. That staff did request this document regardless. And we did ask the applicant if they could provide this information, and their response is attached to the staff report.
Their response was to ask their septic engineer if he, if, if they could slide around it some way. I mean, to be blunt, that's what it was, they never picked up the phone, and, and he never picked up the phone and asked. The agency who had the city shut down the whole civic center area for five years, or ten years, or whatever it's been. Well, this was dated two thousand and ten, so it's twelve years. Never bothered to ask them. And, and, and we're spending inordinate amount of city time. City staff time, and you guys complain about not having enough staff time. To wait so we can argue with when we're all done. Because the client wants to do it that way, or the applicant.
Yeah, okay.
And, and.
John.
Now, it, it's up to, you know, obviously up to the city, they want to get sued or whatever, fine, but. To say that an office building that turns into a motel with a spa on top of it is the same project is ludicrous.
Trevor, yeah.
Chair Hill, as, as I said, this project definitely will never be constructed without that approval from the regional board. If there is a motion, do you want to continue and have staff, direct staff to go reach out to the board, you can do that now. I would suggest, you know, just deciding on that so we can move on, because there's a lot of other pieces to the.
Yeah, 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 straw poll, I, I don't, I don't, I don't get a sense that there's more than two of us who care about this.
Well, I just want to ask you guys, do you want to put another planning commission three years from now through it again? And you want to waste. Hundreds of hours of Adrian's time and, and, and two appeals. To make a phone call, that's all I'm saying. A, a, a letter, a phone call.
John, if, if somebody thinks about it and changes their mind, we'll hear from them, Jeff, you have a comment? No?
A couple, yeah, the first is that, that John is confused about the terminology. Because we do not issue permits, permits are issued by the building department. And so the process that we're going through here now. However, ends up is not going to end up with the issuance of a permit. Um and Adrian, it is, I, I'm not sure that it got through, but his. Presentation included the idea of making sure that the conditions were stated as such that. No permits would be issued until the regional quality, uh regional water quality control board. Issued its approval of the project. So.
We, we get that.
I. But I wonder, um the, the question then is, uh I, I. It always confused me because. It seemed to me that it was the property owners in the property owner's interest. To get that approval. Regardless, because the project can't be built, why? You know, why would you do that without, you know, getting the, the, getting the, the uh approval? So it seems like the onus should be on them. To do that. And, and I'm hearing a little bit different. I mean, I'm, I'm hearing from John tonight that really the concern is that. Uh if we grant planning approval to this project, that it's going to end up. Um costing a lot of more. Uh tha- tha- that the staff time that would be spent. Processing the, the, the process through. Uh the, the building and safety department would be essentially wasted time. Um from the point of view of the staff and, and I get that although. Um the staff time. In the planning depart, i- in the, in the building and safety department is paid for, of course, right? You know, it's an out, kind of a. Thing where the fees have to cover the costs of doing it. But, but I get the, I get the idea that you think it would be a waste of, of staff time. Um. I, I, I'm a little nervous. That it appears to be um. Just sort of a way to. I, I, I'm not sure how it plays out. Um. If, if we say, okay. You've got to come back with uh regional water quality control board approvals of this project before we will issue planning approval. And it goes to the regional water quality control board and from what I understood. Uh from uh the response was that. Um. Regional water quality control board says, we don't, we don't issue those approvals until we've got a project that, that we can review. Um then what happens? John.
Um, three things. Number one. We are issuing tonight, if we vote for this, a coastal development permit. Okay, now. A lot of the wasted time is the appeals, okay? But we're not asking the co, the regional water board to approve this project at all. We're saying. Ask them. Is this, this, is this the project you put on four ZZ? That's the only question. Do they consider this the office building that they exempted ten years ago? That. They don't have to approve this project at all.
And if it's not, then it just requires concurrent approval, right?
Right. It says if it's not on that list. They gotta look at it while we're looking at it. They gotta review it now.
Yeah.
If it isn't, if it's on that list, it comes back to us in two weeks. Okay, that's, that's all we're talking about. And, and. John Cotty apparently agrees that the word address is not the same as the word they mean by project. And. I'm not asking you to stall this for a year, send it off to the regional water board for some hearing that's gonna happen six months from now. They don't have to have a hearing. This is staff interpretation.
Okay, I'm, I'm hearing a latent motion to continue this for two weeks or what, something. But I also feel like there's stuff that we wanna get through, so. I don't know how you frame that up to say, you know, can we spend some time addressing this? We've all focused on it. We've all done a bunch of reading. Let's see if we move ahead, but.
Well, Craig, Craig, that, that, that seems like the right thing to do, but. Number one, if I were making a motion, which I'm not, because this is a consensus thing, unless we do make a motion and decide we got three votes. Is I would say, staff, come back when you get written. Clarification from the regional water board about four ZZ and this project. And then we hear it, okay?
What if, what if?
But let me just finish. If we hear a bunch of stuff tonight, we can't vote on it. We gotta do just like we heard a bunch of stuff last time. Uh we, we, so we'll spend a bunch of time, then we'll go re, have another hearing and do it over again. Uh and I know you, I've read everything. I've read, you know, this much and so have you guys. You've looked at all the little things in your magnifying glass and slopes and this and that, but. If, if they come back in two weeks and say. It's not on ZZ. That's it.
See, here's my problem, John. You're suggesting that. We tell staff, come back when you've got an answer from regional water quality. And that doesn't work for me because regional water quality may not be willing to give an answer. So there has to be some other drop dead point. Uh rather than that, there has to be other, some other point.
Certainly, certainly they would, that send back a, a, an advisory reply of some sort.
Why do you think so?
Well, I don't think, they're, they're, they, they can't just simply ignore us. It's one government agency and another. I mean, you're right, it might take more than two weeks, but.
Um. Oh, no, I, well, I, your premise is wrong. They, they absolutely can't ignore us. Other agencies ignore us all the time.
Let me give you an example, Jeff. When, when we did that house on the col, on the Colney Road. That. Theoretically, you guys voted to approve it, but theoretically had more fixtures, blah, blah, blah. Our staff called them up. They got it, I, they got it, okay, go ahead with the thing. They, phone call.
Yeah, and, and that, sure, John, and if that works, it works. But my problem is, what if it doesn't work? What if they don't respond? What if they can't give a definitive answer? I'm not willing to have this project sit in limbo. For god knows how long until they get it, until staff gets a definitive answer.
Then give them, give them a, a time limit.
Alright, alright.
But, but just sit here and not make a phone call and go through all this stuff. Uh, you know, if they refuse to give an answer, which I would doubt. Fine, let's say you got, what, what is it? You know, I don't know what Adrian or, or Richard. Would think a, a staff would take to make a decision like that. You've dealt with a water board, Richard. Month, two months at the most?
Hakim has got his hand up. Uh you might have some information that would be useful for.
Um. Sure, briefly, let's hear, open his mic, please.
On this subject.
On this subject, yeah.
Hi.
Yeah.
Thank you for letting me speak. Um, we did make a phone call through NC two engineering. And we brought up this very subject and what John Yerslawski who, who knows this. And had reiterated to us through the water board is that they won't look at this. Until it has been reviewed and accepted. By staff so that they know exactly what it is that they are approving. Um and you also ke- kept saying that we're talking about this as an address. And it needs concurrent approval. The concurrent approval is if it's not on this list. And we feel that it, this project is on the list and not only by the address, it's also on the list with its APN. The assessal parcel number, so.
Alright. Can, can I ask Mr. Hakim a question?
Uh, yes.
So. Um what we need, or what I think would, Craig and, and, and John would need would be a statement. Of. Either by the, the project septic engineer quoting. His telephone conversation with regional water quality board or better, something from regional water quality board saying. We won't look at this until, in, in substance, we won't look at this until you, we've got a project that we know all the parameters of. Uh. How long do you think getting some sort of a response like that would take?
Uh he told me that in order to get a letter response from them, it takes months. Um and that the city is well aware of this and that is exactly the reason why. They, they don't look at this until it has been approved because it takes forever to get responses from the regional water board. Um, John did put together a response that I think we attached to this. Uh memo so that, that, you know, this statement came from our uh project engineer.
Yes, and the, and your response was, we talked to our project engineer and he said, don't worry about it, they don't need it. He did not say, it did not say, I talked to them, blah, blah, blah. Okay, now. I, I, that's why I'm asking this. Nobody, according to Joe Drummond, because she talked to him. They have, she claimed, she told us tonight, they have never been called. And that was coming from the water board.
Yeah, thank you, Stephen. We'll, we'll, we'll continue on the panel here.
Um, so I, I'd like to just propose, uh the staff goes immediately to. The water board with this direct question is, is this, this, the project you put on four ZZ? Okay, because they use the word project in the city's MOU. Interpretation, which they wrote. Uh and say, is this it? Do we, uh?
It's the water board now.
Yeah.
Um. Staff.
Good question.
Stat, yeah, following, following what John said a minute ago, staff. Adrian, um on that one on Malibu Road, he said you guys were able to just call them and get an answer. Did you, were you, did you call them? What, what happened on that one?
No, it, it's, it's really not that simple and I don't know if Richard wants to weigh in on this issue. Uh and, and the condition of approval that um we already have that, again, I uh crafted some, some minor uh changes to. Uh which is condition, I believe is eighty-eight. Uh requires that both plans and supporting documents be submitted uh to the uh water quality control board. Um it will take time for them to review that information and provide a determination. Um and it, you know, that's just their, their normal process. Um so, uh could it take months? Yes. Um is, is the communication with the water quality control board uh something that takes a while? Yes. Uh we had uh Andrew Sheldon when uh he worked in the city. Um he had a.
We need this story? Do we, are we going down a rabbit hole here?
No, well, no, no, I was just gonna say, he had a contact person that he would call and uh he would get information a little bit faster than most. But even then, uh information would take a long time. Um and so, um and I believe the, the liaison that was available at that time is a different person now. So, so it, it, yes, it, it could take months, uh and it will likely take months. Uh and then ultimately, uh what we might uh. Get is not necessarily, I think, what you're hoping for, which is a final determination. Um because they won't do that until they have a plan, until those are plan approved on the project.
It's really a definition. Hang, hang on, John, John, Richard has his hand up.
A- and just to be quick so that uh we're clarified on this, it was the building official um who took care of the Malibu. Road project, I believe is the one you're talking about, or Malibu Colony, sorry. Malibu Colony project, i- it was Yolanda who reached out. Now. I would be curious to know which staff member uh Ms. Drummond spoke to. Because what we do know is that in addition to what the Hakims have said. We did uh provide a copy of the SEQA document to the regional board. And we did not receive any comments back, so that would be something. Uh that I think would be important to note here and if somebody at the regional board said they didn't hear of this, I'd like to know who they were. Uh because of the fact that we did submit documents to them uh prior to this being deemed complete.
Okay, hang on, hang, hang on, hang on. Um I don't see Mark and he's raised his hand though somewhere. What's going on? Is Mark on the screen?
I see him, he's at the top.
No, Drummond's got her hand up.
Well, Mark is not on my screen suddenly for some reason. Anyway, his hand is. Now I see you, okay. Yeah, Mark.
Well, it, it sounds to me like uh Mr. Hakim has got proof that his project is on the list, so has anybody seen what he's got? Or it sounds like there's a discrepancy between what John's looking at and what uh, what the applicant has. So can we straighten that out?
Well, I don't think the applicant has anything. He says his proj, his property is the same address. I can read you what he says.
He, he has a phone call. He got, he had it, we're, he's telling us about a phone call.
Well, can, can I maybe explain? It's not.
Let me know, let me put this in perspective again. The regional water board does not approve these projects, okay? They don't approve them. Anywhere else in the city, they do not approve them. What they did in this case, they set an MOU. Said you may not build anything in the civic center area until you put in a sewer. Unless you're an ongoing project and here's the list, okay? And that's four ZZ. A normal house on point two doesn't go to the regional water board to review.
So, so the question.
Neither does, neither does this project. This project does not go before the water board for review unless it's on that list.
The, 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 the only question is really is whether this is the same project or not.
And now, and I wanna answer one other thing. Richard said, oh, we sent them the, the uh SEQA document. The SEQA document was done ten years ago for another project. Okay? They didn't say anything. It was before they made the MOU.
John, let's, let's hear from.
Sorry.
Adrian, here, I'm, I'm banging my gavel now. Uh I'd like ten seconds from Joe Drummond. If you can open her. Can you give us ten seconds, Joe?
Hi, yeah, I, I spoke to Lala Kavadayan in, at the regional water board. Quality board in, in Los Angeles and this was the first she'd ever heard of it and she's, she made me put in a formal. Um request about it and they're investigating it now and it's gone to the permits department. I'm just gonna read from that, the table four ZZ thing. It says to the two thousand.
We, 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 we've, we've all read that.
But it's, it says that including those projects identified on four ZZ that it prohibits.
Yeah. Okay.
So the water board's investigating it already. Why don't we just go to them and say, you're investigating us? What are you doing? And, and get an answer. I mean, what is so hard about that? I, this is what I don't understand.
Trevor.
You have the option of continuing it for, you know, a month, you know, to see what the response is from the, the board. If it's gonna take a long period of time, it's up to you if you guys want to. To do that, but um. You know, I think it's, 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 you guys should just resolve the issue of whether you wanna continue this and get that information or if you wanna proceed tonight.
Yeah, I, I, here's what I would like to do. Uh John's gonna make a motion about that. I, I, what I would like to do is first hear a couple of what I. Think are other threshold issues that might, might, may or, may or may not be something that you'd need to continue it for, that, that might. Might or might not um add more concern. Uh of more impetus to wait a little bit. I don't know. So maybe, how to, if we put a pin in this for a moment and come back to it? Can we, can we do that, John? Is that, did you?
Fine with me.
Okay.
I, I just, you know.
Okay. I mean, I, I think that would probably make sense to just get this cleared up. Um. Let me ask about another, what seems like a threshold issue. And we've hold, heard now a couple of times from staff. That the uh subtracting one-to-one slope areas is not something you do in commercial. That that's a, the residential and the TDSF, da, 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 da. Explain to me then how you are distinguishing or saying that this is, is not an issue with the uh, the FAR calculation here. Because we have MMC and LIP code sections that, that mirror each other. That say, and uh seventeen point forty dot zero eight zero two D. And LIP three point eight, commercial development standards A two D. Uh that say for the purpose of calculating yards, slopes equal to or greater than one point one shall not be included in the lot dimensions. This is for commercial building standards. Um, I'm guessing you, you would be hanging up and saying, well, we're not calculating yards, but then my question would be. What are we doing if not calculating yards? Because. The yard is the portion of the lot that's not the structure. It's, it's what you're measuring the FAR against. And so to get that point one five FAR, you're calculating the yard, you, you're uh, uh and. Or, and or maybe you're suggesting there's uh definitionally. That this is about side yards somehow, but this doesn't say side yards. It's not about set. that this is about side yards somehow, but this doesn't say side yards. It's not about setbacks. It's just about the yard. You've got the, the structure and the yard. So I don't see how this section doesn't apply to it, and it's significant because the FA, they're close enough to the FAR, that if we subtracted those one-to-one areas, as, as this code would require, then they'd have to rejigger something to, to, to get in under the FAR. Well, why are these sections not applicable?
So, uh, the section you're referring to, again, it's to, uh, measure yards. And as we all know, uh, the city of Malibu has a, uh, I guess peculiar way of identifying lot depth and lot width for lots, because, uh, most of our lots in the city, um, are irregular shaped lots. Um, and so there is a, a lot depth and lot width, uh, dimension that has to be, uh, calculated. And based on that, you then calculate your setbacks. And so for the purposes of those calculations, you do exclude one-to-one slopes. Uh, and the idea was that if you're on a bluff, uh, that you would essentially be removing the bluff from your lot depth and lot width calculations. And then your setbacks would then be measured from the top of that bluff or.
Right.
Or, or, or excluding that bluff. But, um, but when calculating FAR, right, it specifically says you use the, uh, the lot area. And so you go to the definition of the lot area, and that definition says that the only thing you exclude is, uh, the streets, uh, right away. Uh, it does not say that you then also exclude, uh, one-to-one slopes.
But this, the language you're talking about calculating yards makes no reference to side yards, and it sounds to me that it's a commercial building standard. You're calculating, just as you said, we have irregular shapes, and so you have to calculate the size of what it, what, what's the whole parcel we're dealing with here? And, um, you subtract out the one-to-one areas, that, and that's the, that's the lot you get. So I, 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 I guess I'm not, I feel like you're splitting a hair that I don't see.
Right. And, 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 you know, a- again, uh, the same standard you will find, uh, for residential. Uh, however, um, there was a, uh, explicit language that was included in the total development square footage for residential that indicates that one-to-one slopes were to be removed when calculating that, uh, you know, to, to the development square footage. That language did not make it into, uh, commercial, uh, development. Uh, so it's not in the floor area ratio. So if there was an intent, uh, for one-to-one slopes to be removed from the lot area when calculating FAR, that information should have been there.
Hmm.
Where, where does it say that, that you use that definition to calculate floor area ra- ratio?
What's it say? What, what definition specifically?
The lot, the lot versus the, the Craig's, Craig's section. Where does it say, here's how I count floor area ratio. I don't take out the one percent slopes.
The, the floor area ratio is, you know, it's a separate section that talks about the lot area, uh, and the ratio of development based on that lot area. That lot area is defined in, uh, the definition. And that, that term, uh, does not, uh, exclude one-to-one slopes. So again, we're talking about two different sections. Um, and one specifically says one-to-one slopes are removed for calculating yards. Whereas the floor area ra- uh, floor area ratio has just lot area, and there's no indication in that language that one-to-one slopes need to be removed. So we have for commercial, and that's different for residential.
In commercial, we have, uh, there, but therefore a definition of lot and a definition of yard that are essentially the same thing and yet somehow different.
Well, yards are, you know, um, are, are, are presumed to be your setbacks and your lot depth and lot width. Um, you know, not, not your lot area. Lot area is specifically designed, or excuse me, uh, defined in the code.
All right, I, I have a problem with that, but, um, I, I, I think we'll move on, and I don't, I don't see a lot of momentum heading with me. Um, I, I, I've got one more big threshold concern here. Does anybody else have anything that they wanted? I don't want to do all the talking here.
Well, I'd, I'd like to bring up. I think we have an adequate disclosure of the earthquake, the main earthquake fall in Malibu running right underneath the building.
My, my, my third, my third thing had to do with geology stuff.
Okay, well, you know, here we have a map given to us. And we're, we're sitting on basically the beach. Okay, it is underneath that property is the beach. That's why we can't dig down to have an underground garage. And we have the, the main earthquake, the Aqua Pierola Fault, right underneath the building. And we have an adequate discussion of it. We have basically zipped. And, you know, this is a big deal.
Okay, let me.
And our code says you have to move a hundred feet off the fault line.
Okay, John, I have, I have a tight, I have a tight summary of this. Um, the, we found from the initial study that the slope is already suspect. I'll go and, I'll detail that briefly. And then there's been some new data that, that John was just alluding to since the initial study. Um, number one, the geology section of the ISMND says, quote, the residential structure located north of and above the slopes on and adjacent to the project site has been identified on top of a potentially unstable slope. End quote. So this prior commission turned down additions to that house directly above due to geological instability. Number two, the initial study said that excavating the toe has potential to cause slope failure if exacerbated by rainfall. That's a quote. Number three, uh, in e- email, Adrian said to us in another context, quote, "A fifteen-foot horizontal distance to the ascending slope was recommended due to stability concerns." So there's, we're concerned about that. Number four, the initial study said there's a possibility there could be trace of previously unidentified faults on site. Number five, the project site is located within an area susceptible to liquefaction, also a quote. Now, so that, that much, everybody said, okay, fine, we'll live with it. There's uncertainty there, but now we have new data. Number six, the recent USGS map, twenty twenty-one, that was provided to us by Ms. Gouldeman, shows that the Malibu Coast Fault runs through the bluff directly behind and above the site. Number two, the state of California map of seismic hazard zones shows the site to be clearly at risk of not only liquefaction, but also earthquake-induced landslides. Um, then eight, when the initial study was done, geologists, Caltech, USGS, believed that the fault, Malibu Coast Fault was capable of producing a Richter four or five approximately. That was the standard of evaluation then. But now the new twenty twenty-one data from USGS predicts a potential seven point O on the Malibu Coast Fault. So that science isn't in the initial study, and it seems like it would be a big difference if we're talking about a fifty-foot retaining wall. Um, Suzanne concluded, this project involves a fifty-foot retaining wall directly under a major earthquake fault. The argument that no one realized that it was such an active fault in an area of liquefaction isn't going to help if the project is built and collapses, potentially precipitating the kind of major landslide that could close PCH for weeks. So there's a lot of uncertainty here. Um, I, I think we need some kind of, I, I don't know what the remedy is, whether it's a, a letter from some geotech who says we've, we've done the study under the new USGS assumptions. Whether that portion of the initial study should be redone, whether that's the same consultant, I don't know. I don't know what the remedy is, but it, it feels like we have new data and it's not adequate to say, well, you know, we approved it in twenty ten, so they get the benefit of that approval, and we're just gonna kind of close our eyes to what we know now. Uh, yeah, Dennis.
Okay, you guys are way off the mark here. Um, if you take a look at, drive around our city after the rain and see all the slopes that came down and came down on the highways and all of our little side roads and Cannon Road, and every other slope just about from the east side to the west side. However, this didn't move. This had nothing come off of it into the parking lot, all the way, all the way to the entrance, uh, over to Get to Sarah. Drive by and look and see how much material came off that hill during that five-inch rainstorm we had. Zero. So, and you're talking about an earthquake fault? Our whole damn state's an earthquake fault. The only place I wouldn't live in our state really is Ridgecrest. The rest of this stuff is figured in. You guys are way off the mark on this. This building will hold together better than just about anybody else, because it's brand new. You're missing it. This thing will be safe. Hang on.
I just want to make a comment.
Wait, wait, hang on, I think he's still talking.
Oh, I'm still, I thought he said, stopped. My apologies.
Safe building. And it will be put together, everything will be done, it'll be inspected. They figured for this stuff, you guys. But this, this hillside, yes, the, the fault's probably up somewhere in Sarre, Sweetwater, whatever. But it's fine. It's not, you know, okay, well, it's gonna be a seven oh. Well, I lived on the last Casus earthquake fault my whole life in Hemet. I know what that's like. The house kind of jiggled all the time. So, but it was on a raised foundation with, with, you know, plastered walls, no cracks, just heard the house move all the time. I know what that's like, and I lived a few miles from the San Francisco Fault. That's a fault. So anything that's going to be done with this, this thing would be one of the better buildings that gets built here in Malibu, because it's new, the stuff's all figured in. There's no problem with that slope. They're gonna build into it, tie this thing all into the ground. It'll be wonderful.
Yeah, Dennis, Dennis, there's truth on both sides here. You're right about some of that. One thing, though, you know, it's sort of anecdote, anecdotal to say it didn't come down in this rain, so it's fine. And secondly, we don't build within a hundred feet of a fault just by code. So the proximity isn't, you can't just say it's all California. The proximity matters. John?
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody that a couple of months ago, maybe three months ago, we approved a house that a guy had bootlegged over on Malibu Road, and we said, oh, no, you don't need to do geology. Because, you know, it's okay. And last week, five houses down, it slid and broke the gas main and had a big, big giant, uh, public works disaster. Okay? We, we are, uh, we are responsible for following the code and asking, asking the questions, not just, oh, I, by the way, Dennis, I lived ten years, twelve miles from Ridgecrest, okay? So I know about earthquakes. And I, and, and no big deal, but I also know there's a tower in San Francisco that's tilting twenty-six inches right now, and they don't know what to do about it. So you do need professionals to look at this stuff. And when the code says, says you can't build within a hundred feet of an earthquake, uh, zone, uh, uh, fault line, and we get a map that shows it's sitting right on top of it, we have to ask that question. That's all. We have the responsibility to ask that question.
Okay, Richard.
Very much. I just want to make a point of clarification for the accuracy tonight of the discussion. Um, I keep hearing folks refer to twenty ten and twenty ten initial study, twenty ten geology reports and, and things like that. Yes, reports for the original project, there were things out there that were done in twenty ten. However, all of that was redone. And the initial study, uh, that was passed around to the regional board, as I mentioned earlier, that was, uh, within the, I want to say, eight, correct me if I'm wrong, Adrian. I think this was the one that was going around a year ago. Is that correct? Uh, around the holidays last year? I remember how.
It, it may have been a year or two ago, um, but it, it is within the last two years.
And the same holds true with the geotechnical report as well. The geotechnical reports were all updated. We did not bring to you just simply a, a redesign based on materials from a, a, a past redesign. It, it.
And I, I misspoke about the twenty ten. There was an update, and the most recent, though, is twenty eighteen. And the concern here is that the USGS stuff, the, the re-Richters, uh, raising the Richter rating, uh, that's all twenty twenty-one. So I, I'm, I'm pretty, pretty certain that that's not, that has not been looked at, and that's why I put this on the threshold question list.
The, the, the other point of correction, uh, that I think we need to clarify is that, um, the planning commission did not deny an addition to the house on top of this property, uh, because of geotechnical issues. Uh, they denied that request because of variances that were required for two-thirds and construction on steep slopes. They actually revised, uh, uh, those plans, uh, in a way that would be amenable to the planning commission, and the planning commission did end up approving an addition to that house. Um, you know, I, I want to say a couple of years ago. Um, the other thing I want to say is.
Let me just say on that one point, I, I was quoting directly from the ISNMD, saying that that, that that was the reason why.
And it's a different house you're talking about.
Maybe.
The house immediately to the north, uh, you actually see the house as it stands on the property. That house came in, uh, for an application to, uh, built a second, uh, uh, a, a garage. Uh, it would be, uh, a detached garage in addition to, uh, the attached garage that's already on the building. Um, and that came to the planning commission, and again, it was, um, it, it, it wasn't denied. It, they were asked to make some revisions, which they did, and then, uh, the planning commission ended up approving um, those changes. And then the fifteen-foot setback from the, uh, toe of the slope, this is a building required for all projects. Uh, in, in, in fact, this property, uh, meets the factor of safety requirements, so they're not, they're not, um, requiring the fifteen-foot setback because of instability issues. Uh, they're doing that because that is a building and code requirement for all development that's on the bottom of a, a, a steep slope. Uh, and that's just a, a, a code requirement.
Well, let, let me just get back to, we're talking about, we're talking about big issues.
John, John, let me just answer quickly. I think that the, the dis- the distinction is that property up above was just allowed for a residential change sometime between whenever the IS was done. And that more, more recently in twenty twenty, I think, is when they did the other change that you were talking about that wasn't residential, it was just about the garage and whatever, and so that's why they allowed it. Right?
Well, and I don't.
Rabbit hole, sorry, John, go ahead.
I, I, we're getting into the weeds on a bunch of stuff, but basically, the point I'm trying to make here on all of this, there's, there's, we can go through a million things. It's, it's like, uh, we've denied lifts on every other project in Malibu. Okay, uh, uh, obviously, there's massive CUP violations at Aviator Nation. Uh, the, the, uh, seating chart is from fourteen years ago. It hasn't existed in forever. The service area is wrong. There's all kinds of things. Those are nitpicky things that we go through. What I'm trying to say in this whole thing about delaying it, say, say two months, whatever, uh, is so we don't go through all the nitpicky stuff and all this stuff, and then it goes through all that through the city council, then it goes through all that at coastal commission. And then we say, oh, we'll let you see the plans. Oh, gee, we didn't, we don't approve it.
Okay.
Let me weigh in here. Uh, I'm, I'm actually willing to support a, a brief, uh, continuance of the matter. Uh, for the sole purpose of going to regional water quality control board and seeing if we can elicit some sort of a response. Um, and we'll come up with a number, whether it's a month or two months or something like that, but it's gotta be very, relatively short. And it, and if, if we don't get a response in that time, then, then we just have to move forward. And the reason I'm willing to do that, and, and I'm not willing to, to, to go on to further, uh, questions about the geology or the stability, uh, because you, you know, we, we can go back, I'm not a geologist, and we can go back and forth, and you guys talk about, you know, well, there's this report, and there's that report, and what about this, and what about the fault? And all the rest of it. And, and in the end result, we've got to have to rely on the people who are credentialed, who give us the, the, their opinions on these things. You're, you're no more a geologist than I am. I'm certainly neither is John. And, and, you know, when I, I, I see you making an, an argument on the, 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 uh, the legal interpretation or the, or the, the statutory interpretation on, uh, whether, uh, uh, one-to-one slopes are eliminated in, in, um, uh, calculating, uh, FAR. That's not an argument that a lawyer would make. Uh, and, and so I'm worried about, you know, the, putting faith in arguments that, that have to do with geology. Um, I'm not listening to what those experts have to say on the matter. So I am willing to go to, to, to give a consideration to continuance, uh, for going back to the regional water quality control board, and here's why. To, to give a consideration to continuance, uh, for going back to the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and here's why. Among other, it'd be nice to be able to get an answer from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, but that's not my main, uh, thrust here. And my main thrust has to do with how we have to handle the variance issues. My analysis is that we need to have affirmative evidence in the record, allowing us to make the findings that we have to make in order to grant, uh, any of the variances that, uh, have been applied for. The reason why the, I, I can get into all of that, but I won't get into it now. There's, I have my own feelings about why this many variances had to be applied for, but, uh, the, the, the point I want to make is that we have to have substantial evidence in the record. And I am concerned about the level of evidence that's in the record now, uh, that would support the findings, particularly findings one and three, uh, for the, um, retaining wall and the, uh, uh, variance for, uh, construction on slopes greater than three to one, and, uh, for the exemption on the grading. Now, we got a letter that was just delivered to me today by, uh, Tony Dorn, and has one paragraph in it that says, I understand the height of the retaining wall has been a point of discussion, but almost all of the commercial properties have walls of this height. Two-two-six-oh-one PCH, two-two-seven-four-one PCH, two-two-seven-six-one PCH, two-two-eight-oh-nine PCH, and two-two-nine-one-seven PCH. Uh, one of the speakers, Nick, uh, Eleopolis, must have read the same letter because he quoted the same document. Well, I got that today. I'm not able to go down and check that stuff out by myself. That is the kind of evidence that staff needs to give us in the staff report to provide substantial evidence to support a finding in favor of, uh, a variance. We can't do it floating in the air. There are situations where a variance can be allowed, where not to grant the variance would simply mean that no project could be built at all. That's kind of the way this staff report is written. Uh, it's not really correct in this case. And so we need to have that substantial evidence. It's the staff's job to get it for us, and I'm willing to, um, uh, continue the matter on the Regional Water Quality, uh, Control Board issue, uh, in order to be able to allow that evidence, if there is evidence, be brought forward. John, if you got your hand up saying you don't want a continuance anymore, I'm not.
No, 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 no. I'm saying I totally agree with you. I, I would like to, and, and I would like to also have. I checked one of those addresses and it's not right, uh, but. That's not what we're debating tonight. I think that it's correct. We come back with the correct information. There's a lot of stuff that people want to hear. Uh, they can contact staff and find out what, tell them what it is. So, uh, and in the case of things that were built prior to the LCP, I want staff to say that wasn't, that wasn't granted by the LCP, that was the county, and that wasn't the code.
Um, that's a debatable point, John, as to whether that, whether that counts.
But, well, not by many judges, but I'd like to make a motion that we continue the item for staff to contact the Regional Water Board and get a, a clarification of four ZZ. And, uh, and if they do not get an answer within two months of the time they asked them, then we re-adjourn. That would re-adjourn anyway, but we re-adjourn.
Yeah, Commissioner Maza, could I suggest that you continue to a date certain to avoid re-noticing? And then direct staff to, in the interim, reach out to the Regional Water, uh, Control Board on the issue of whether, uh, this project qualifies for exemption under, uh, four ZZ, and then report back at that meeting?
Okay, Richard. All I need is an estimate of how long it will take you to contact them and the meeting two months from then.
Can it be applicant two? I mean, if there, if.
We want, we've got information from the applicant, and we've got confirmation that it wasn't done. So we want from the horse's mouth, period, in my, my opinion. We want to get over with this. There's no reason staff can't get an answer.
Doesn't prevent, uh, the applicant from reaching out as well.
But I, I want an answer from staff. So what, what would be a meeting two months from whatever it takes you to two weeks to go talk to them?
My opinion is that as part of your motion, uh, it could be to include that the applicant provide you possible a letter, uh, written confirmation from the regional board. We can try to reach out. I think, Adrian, correct me if I'm wrong, but when Yolanda and Melinda attempted this last time, I want to say it, took over a month, correct? I want to say almost two months.
It, it, it was a different, uh, type of request. The other one was, uh, just determination on the, uh, plumbing or the, uh, fixture unit count, um, given that that property was not on the, the four ZZ, uh, table. Um, so I'm not sure, uh, how long it would take to get an answer, but if we can get it, given that Commissioner Jennings also, uh, is requesting that we, uh, do some additional work on the findings, and the fact that that's gonna take some time considering, uh, our workload. Um, we can, I, I think at the earliest, we should be looking at bringing this item back, uh, no later, uh, no earlier than two months from now.
Okay.
Would possibly March twenty first.
Can we make it, give you guys two weeks to ask him? So can we make it, uh, April fifteenth or whatever that would be?
So you have a choice between April fourth or April eighteenth?
Do you have any calendars? Well, i- is it gonna take you a bunch of time to write this stuff up again, too?
I, I think, Adrian, why don't we target April fourth? That gives you time to work on the, the applicant can give us some of the additional information needed to address, uh, Commissioner Jennings', uh, comments, and then also to reach out to the regional board.
And, and Richard, is it possible for other planning commissioners to ask you guys to do it, or we have to do it right now? Because I've got a couple of questions, and I'm sure some other people have, that should probably be answered. Craig had the question on geology. I have a question on how you calculate grading.
Well, hang on, hang on. This is a question for Trevor, because I, I, I feel like ideally, we could each individually come to staff and say, here's a list of things that I, I'm not comfortable with yet. It would be great if you could tighten this up here, there, whatever, but, um, can, can, can we leave it that open-ended in terms of any motion that we make now? Um, I mean, any one of us could come to staff with a list of things we want seen that, that everybody else doesn't care about, so. Yeah, I, I would actually, I would actually suggest that any commissioners that have, uh, request additional information or questions, reach out individually to staff. Uh, when this comes back, we will, we will reopen the, the public hearing, uh, so we'll have a, a chance to comment since we will bring, be bringing new information in, so we're not closing it off, um, given the.
Richard, was your date April fourth? Was that it?
Yes, I think that's the most appropriate, given that, uh, we had about a third to about half our staff depart us.
Okay, well, I, I, you gotta do your taxes too, so, uh, okay, uh, Jeff, I'm making a motion, we continue to April fourth, uh, and staff and direct staff to contact the Regional Quality Water Board on, uh, four ZZ.
And Jeff, before Jeff, uh, forms his other, his half of the motion, or his, the way he wants to say, I just wanted to, to reiterate what you said about backing up some of these variances for the findings and getting us this data. And I, to me, it is important to know which of these big retaining walls elsewhere were done cityhood or before. How tall really are they? Um, this whole question of, of is something a special privilege and that kind of thing. I just feel like we need more context on a number, on, on the variances in general, like contrasting them with others, and, and I think, I think it's a different game now because, you know, uh, and this is for Doug and, and the Hakims, it's, you know, it's a nice-looking design, and it might work great in some world, but here in our jurisdiction, this is four variances you're asking for, and, and SBR for excessive height. And it would, it would be one thing if we were in a vacuum, but now Lester has shown us that there are alternative projects that could be done on this site for possibly none of these variances. I, I don't know exactly, but certainly not nearly as much has been, has been asked for. So to me, that sort of raises the stakes and says, i- if we're gonna get, if, if you could do a project with, you know, zero or one or two variances, then if you want to do four plus an SPR, then we need to be really tight.
And, and I'm also gonna wonder, I, I also wonder how you have a, a above-bound garage be subterranean. But, uh, that, you know, again, you can have backup, but we don't, I, uh, okay, I'm not gonna argue that point now.
The only, the only reason I mentioned, the only reason I mentioned it was to explain for whoever happens to be listening why I was supporting the motion for a continuance, and, and it shouldn't take a rocket scientist to figure out why I was saying that. So, uh.
Can we take a vote and go home?
Well, we, we, we need that extra language on what John proposed. You just said for the wa- we're just leaving it for the water, that's it?
And, and they, it's implied from what Trevor said, that any commissioners can ask questions of staff.
Sure.
Uh, you know, up till a week or two before and get some answers.
So we have a motion, and, and, uh, Jeff, you seconded it, that's what. Okay, to, to click confirm, the motion is to continue this item and item one A to April fourth.
I'm sorry, Trevor, can, uh, we've continued item, uh, one A without any discussion. I, I'd like to get some feedback on that if possible. Um, in that way, we would hope, hope to maybe provide the necessary information for that item since we have yet to have a public hearing on that item.
Here's what we could do. We could, um, make the, make, make the motion or, or hold it in our pocket for a moment. Probably take a quick break, come back, talk about the Jupa stuff, enough to kind of give you a little color. Hold, hold on, what I, what I, what I would recommend is that, you know, we, we wrap this item and you continue this item to April fourth, you can be done with it, and then we can come back, and then, um, Adrian can maybe ex- expand, and then you can decide whether you want to open the hearing on the other one or also continue it, because obviously, uh, you can't make a decision on that item tonight given, um, one B is being continued.
Correct.
But I would like to wrap this up since, uh, uh, you know, we, we did have, we have open deliberations at this point.
I move the question.
Hey, hey, hang on, Jeff.
Yeah, I, I don't think that that, that that game is gonna be worth the candle, so that's a, as they say. Um, I don't think there's gonna be enough productive information that Adrian's gonna get, it's gonna help him with regard to one A. What we could do instead is the same thing we just talked about, which is that individual, uh, commission members who have problems with it can talk to Adrian, give him, uh, the rundown on what their problems are and, and see if, if the, the necessary information can be developed. I think that's gonna be a lot more productive than us coming back here and sitting around for another hour or two, uh, and, and chatting about it.
Yeah, I absolutely concur, so I'm gonna amend my, well. Can I make the motion, cover one A and one B?
Yeah, so the, the motion then would be to continue items one A and one B to April fourth, twenty twenty-two, and direct staff to reach out to the Regional Water, um, Quality Control Board, um, to discuss whether this project qualifies as exempt under, um, as listed on, uh, the, the exhibit of the appendix ZZ. Does that reflect your motion? I mean, Commissioner Maza and Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, um, are we ready for a vote then? Sounds like we are. Uh, Rebecca, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
I move re-adjourn.
The motion carries.
I move re-adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Got it. We've made a little progress. We'll, we'll keep, keep digging at it.
Don't forget your property taxes.